I just now.
Did I use my capital? Good morning. It is nine AM and we're going to call to order the Clicktack County Commissioner Board Meeting for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four morning session, and we'll start with the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. I'd like to note, too, that there are two Commissioners present. Mr. Anderson's presently online for a little bit. He's on Zoom with us and then he'll join us in a little while. So I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the business agenda with two add-ons. Number one, the Matt Adams Resource Stewards Local Jurisdiction Project Review under new business, and Auditor Heather Jovey to present a resolution to fix a mistake by incorporating a missing piece into the Precinct Twenty-One under unfinished business.
And I will step down and second that motion. All those in favor of approval of the business agenda?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I would move to table the Commissioner meeting minutes until the next meeting.
Okay. So, thank you, Jane. So, public comment, in the room or online. If you choose to, you can go ahead and give your name, and we like to have your name and where you live for our record, if possible. So we're going to start. Here comes Mr. Elred, I think. Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, I'd like to know who controls the fairgrounds? If it's the Commissioners? Because people better start thinking about what they're doing before they do it. For every action, there's a reaction, and charging eight dollars, and I don't know per family what it's going to cost, but eight dollars, you have just reduced the amount of people that are going to that Home and Garden Show. And if I was a vendor, it's really easy to get rid of the vendors, but it's very, very hard to get them back. And that, that's the lifeblood of the Home and Garden Show. I can't believe if this money is going to Chamber of Commerce, where they have authority over what's going on in the county fairgrounds over the Commissioners, because I don't think there was much forethought that you have just probably, I would say, this is going to probably reduce your vendors by one-third at least, because a lot of these small vendors do not make a lot of money, but packing up their goods and bringing them to fairgrounds, if they ain't making anything, it'd be stupid for them to do it again. And that's basically what you have done. You've reduced, you've reduced the amount of people that are going to that show, so you reduce the amount of money that the vendors are going to make. And my second thing is, Mr. Zoller and Commissioner Anderson have stated that it's going to be cheaper if we take and move the prisoners to Norcore. I want to see an itemized, because just saying that don't mean nothing. I want to see an itemized thing before every bill invoice or whatever that's going to be presented to this county from Norcore, because I cannot see where you guys are coming up with this cheaper. I want to see what, where are you coming up with your facts and figures? Before you make any decision, you should present that to us, what, what the cost is going to be. And it should be itemized, not just a, just throw out the numbers, but I want to see itemized figures that are going to, because those are the ones that count. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, good morning. We'll move over to Zoom. Is there anyone online that was just giving testimony this morning or have a question? Seven-two-one-one?
Greg Wagner, seats. Jake Anderson stated the county is in a financial crisis. According to Jake, the county has lost one million six hundred and seventy thousand dollars at the landfill. Regional disposal, the owner of that landfill appealed sixteen Clicktack County tax assessments, which had a disputed amount of one hundred and fifty-five million dollars. And regional has prevailed at the Board of Tax Appeals. The settlement amount has not been disclosed, but that could be an additional loss of revenue to our county. Mr. Christopher stated the settlement will only be a hundred thousand dollars. I hope he's right, but I doubt if the large company did all this work for a hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Christopher also stated the landfill could lose two more additional trash contracts this year. Considering the landfill is the county's largest tax source, this is a major problem. What will you, Can Commissioners do to offset this loss? There is a solution. Various corporations have franchise agreements with Clicktack County, which allows them to operate their business and be profitable. The big question is, how does Clicktack County profit? The upcoming Carriage or Solar franchise agreement will allow Cypress Creek Renewable to install their power lines to make, and to make their Carriage or Solar project operational and profitable. Without this agreement and the connecting power lines, the project will not be operational or profitable. Why doesn't Clicktack County have in the Cypress Creek Renewable Franchise Agreement a clause where the county receives a percentage of Cypress Creek's profits via a franchise compensation fee? Our county and the citizens would benefit from this franchise compensation fee. Nothing in RCW thirty-six fifty-five precludes the county from imposing a fee for the use of our right-of-ways. In fact, in the court decision, Clicktack County, I'm sorry, King County versus King County Water District, the court upheld a franchise compen, held that franchise compensation fees are appropriate. If Clicktack County had a franchise compensation fee, it would be a source of millions of dollars of reliable revenue. You Commissioners must cancel the Carriage or Franchise Agreement hearing until such time that an ordinance is adopted, which requires a franchise agree, franchise compensation fee for the use of our county right-of-ways. Failure to adopt an ordinance will result in millions of dollars of lost revenue, much-needed revenue, and will be the negligence on the part of the Commissioners. Failing to adopt the franchise compensation fee ordinance is violating your oath of office to discharge your duties to the best of your abilities. You are supposed to protect the welfare of the citizens and pro, and to provide free use of our right-of-ways is not protecting the citizens' welfare. I ask that you cancel.
Thank you.
Carriage or franchise hearing scheduled for May seventh until you.
Thank you. In the room? Come forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Dennis Schroder, Goldendale, Washington. Closing the jails is wandering into the foothills of defunding the police. Skamania County looked into it a while back, and it was not cost-effective or practical. Also, I find it interesting that a private citizen could point out during public comment that an RCW exists that states closing a jail requires a ninety-day waiting period. You have a whole staff at your disposal, which Commissioner Zoller mentioned on April sixteenth, but the Commissioners or the staff could not find that information before announcing their plan to close the jail on April twelfth. At a previous meeting, a gentleman stated that the Commissioners do not answer questions asked by the public, as was repeatedly told that they do answer questions. So I'm putting that comment to the test. What is the status of the surplus property brought up a few meetings ago that the county owns in Roosevelt and were wanting to sell? What is its parcel number, or where is it located? Is there a shortage of funds related to the tourism promotion program or budget? Are you repeatedly using money from a current year to finish paying promotion contracts on the previous year, such as a reimbursement request presented in January, or were completed the previous December? The next comment is, it sounds to me like the Carriage or Solar project needs county permission to get their power out using a public right-of-way, and the Commissioners have the avenue to slow down or stop the building project altogether. Obviously, the change of ordinance regarding the five sections within the energy overlay zone does not seem to have slowed or stopped the industrial solar. So maybe denying the public easement will. Can you explain that situation further? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schroder, if I can get a copy of your questions, to answer those would be unqualified for me, and then I'll make sure I.
I can do that.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. So back on Zoom. Is there anyone else online this morning? It's very quiet this morning. In the room? Please turn forward. Thank you.
Andrew Smith, Clicktack County. Couple of questions. I've been on your webpage here for the Clicktack County. I'm unable to find or access certain items on here. This includes budgets. I went through some of your old, and this is twenty-twenty-two, I was trying to find and investigate on some stuff. It seems like all the information is gone, or the webpage, or the item is no longer accessible. I was noticing this. This is just something for the future to check out on? No responses required. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. And back online.
Yeah, I was hoping to make a comment about the Home and Garden Show.
Okay. Could you state your name? We're having problems. There you are. Tricia Ashley?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to come on and talk about the Home and Garden Show and the admission, and kind of just reinforce the fact that due to sustainability, we have chosen to have the admission fee implemented this year. And that comes along with some amazing workshops, activities for families, and then just access to amazing exhibitors that are experts in their fields. And I just wanted to let you all know, because I know that it's kind of like a pain point this year, but, you know, in order to kind of go away far from those tourism dollars that we used to ask for, which is what the county also wants for the sustainability of events. And the admission charge is what we decided to do in order to kind of disperse the costs around, which comes with the overhead of renting the facility. So although I know it is very shocking, I would encourage you guys to check out the Home and Garden Show. We have seminars, workshops almost every hour, and then also over in our kids' area, we have workshops and demonstrations for children and families alike. So it's going to be a great event, and I hope you all can come. And once again, there is a three-dollar discount when you guys bring a non-perishable food item, and that goes to our local food bank. So it's only five dollars for the three days. Eight and under are free, and sixty-five and older are also free. And then we also have Sunday, which does not have workshops, but Sunday is also free. So just wanted to just pop in and remind you all of that.
Thank you, Tricia. And just to clarify, that's eight dollars for the three days, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back in the room? Anybody else this morning? Online? Gabrielle? Good morning. Are you with us?
Yes, thank you.
There you are.
Thank you. There were comments last week in an attempt where, to erase the victims. And that's kind of this trajectory from at first blaming the victims at the jail, and now the attempts to erase them. Attempts to minimize the traumatic events at the jail and rationalize the action at the expense of the victims is always going to be challenged. The victims need to be front and center in every discussion going forward when it concerns the jails and the new policies that are needed. I think that we have to be realistic that the victims are the victims, and when you attempt to blame them and to erase them, that is a stain on this, our community in Clicktack County, and it really needs to stop, and it's always going to be pushed back. George Orwell said, however much you deny the truth, the truth goes on existing. And I think that these victims have every right to the truth of what they experienced, what happened to them, how that's affected their families. And going forward, we need to be clear-eyed about keeping them front and center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in the room? No? Zero-seven-nine-six.
Yeah, good morning, County Commissioners. Lisa Evans, White Salmon. I just want to say thank you to the Auditor's Office for, and who, and whatever departments helped them get the precinct descriptions and maps out so quickly. Filing week is May sixth through tenth. In-person filing opens at eight AM on May the sixth and closes at five PM on May the tenth. So, you know, since we had a lot of redistricting going on in our county, especially within the precincts, all the precinct committee officer offices are open or seats, they will be open this election cycle. So I just wanted to remind everybody, you know, get into the county website, take a look at those new maps, find out where you live. And if you want to be a precinct committee officer within our county, find out where you're at, and that filing week is May sixth through tenth. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, back in the room one more time? Anyone? No? And online? Do you have anyone else online? Good morning. Good morning, Sherry.
Okay. Good morning. I think for the past few weeks, besides closing the county jail down, there's been a hot topic of what's happening with our county financials and our budgets, and why it's been said publicly by the Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, that we're in a financial crisis. And, you know, the gentleman that came up and said he'd like to look at the budget online, that should be readily available for transparency. And if this government entity was actually for the people, you know, you are to look out for our health, safety, and public welfare, or whatever that is. And I'm still very disheartened to have heard a couple times by Commissioner Anderson that if the county can't afford these lawsuits and the bills, they're coming after the people. And I, you know, and if that's not true, if that's not what you meant to say, please clarify, because that's very disheartening to me as one of the people who I, you know, I feel we pay our, our fair share, if not more, and everything, even bridge crossings and electricity and everything now, and in our property taxes, and just keep going up. Why are the people considered the resource to come after? Mr. Wagner just gave you a resource. Mr. Wagner has been a great resource for our county, and he has looked into things and done his research. And I suggest that you follow what he has recommended and said is to cancel that franchise, because, A, it's in a prohibited area, it shouldn't be even a topic. And B, if there is resources to be made, income to be made from having a compensation plan, or what he has suggested, I suggest our county looks into that. And it's time to stop giving these tax deductions, these financial breaks, and all these other things that are given to these renewable corporations, again, owned by foreign lands. That's their owners, that's their daddy corporations. We can't deny this. And we need to stop giving the favors there. If there is a financial crisis, look into what we can do that really holds these corporations who are benefiting from this county and have them pay their fair share. Don't make the people your financial resource. Make us your beneficiaries. Make us people who profit, not get sucked off of. Go to these big corporations that are billions, maybe trillions, we don't know, and make them pay. Please follow what Greg Anderson has said. Stop this franchise and look into how we can make these big corporations compensate, and don't even let this carriage or good thing happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. No one in the room? I think so. Okay, good morning, Dallas Port Murdoch Community Council.
Good morning. This is Anthony Rizzi, the Chairman of the Dallas Port Community Council. And I would like to ask if there's any status or what's going on with our wastewater management that Dallas Port wants to take on for themselves so that we can control and maintain the system that we are currently using. There was supposed to be a big process put out, because both KPUD and Dallas Port both want this O and M contract. And I understand you should go out for three bids, but there's never been a bid system or paperwork put out so that we can even bid on it now, and it's going on a year. So this is getting to be a little ridiculous, waiting on the paperwork so that we can bid on our own future in Dallas Port and Murdoch. So I would like to see something done about that. We would like to know what's going on with that. And along with that, we've been told that there, we can't apply for funds to help our park that we're trying to get together, because we're waiting on the county to come up with a site plan. And that's been pushed down the road and pushed down the road. So you're holding up a lot of things up at the county level that would benefit us at Dallas Port and Murdoch if we could just get some of this moving, instead of sitting there waiting for stuff to happen that never seems to happen. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Arnold.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I'm Pat Arnold from Trout Lake. I do agree with Sherry that tax breaks for special interests are no good, and we shouldn't do it, but I just paid my property taxes this weekend. I just want to say that, even though I often don't agree with the way the county spends money, I am actually always pretty happy to sign my name to that check and put it in the mail, because I get services. I'm not like being taxed for nothing. I'm being taxed to pay for services that I receive. And sometimes those services are really good, like snow removal is pretty good, and some other stuff. So I, I wish that we could just recognize our joint responsibility for funding the government, and then take our job seriously to oversee and comment on how that money is spent. I also want to agree with Gabrielle. I'm really watching the sheriff disavow any responsibility, you know, like, act like it's not anything to do with him, what's happened in the jail, and has been happening for years. These last two incidents are not in isolation. They may be the most dramatic, but they're certainly not the only instances of less-than-perfect treatment in that jail. And it's really time for the sheriff to stand up and say, yeah, this is my job, the buck stops here, and I'm going to fix this situation. And if you can't, I support your efforts to fix it. Yeah, you know, your own selves. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. No one in the room? Pardon me? Okay, Rick.
Yeah, hi. This is Ricky Isaacson from Lyle. And I wanted to ask questions about that budget as well. The, you know, why there's no money is, and how District One got, you know, looked like they got new equipment, and they're trying to work on their roads, and it sounds to me like the Commissioners are closing the jail to make up for mistakes that are made and trying to blame Bob in the sheriff's office. As far as I know, the, how many times did the, was it tried to get that first prisoner transferred, and it didn't happen? It, basically, I want to know where all the money is as well, so I'd like to see those reports as well. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone in the room one more time? No? Anyone else online? I'll ask one more time, and we'll move back to Commissioner comment, and then back to regular business. And seeing no one, we'll close for public comment. And Mr. Anderson, do you have comments?
Would you like to go first? I was on the phone most of it, so I missed a lot. Maybe based on yours, I can play a few.
So we'll start with the fairground question. That event, as you heard, is Chamber of Commerce, and so that is their choices on their entry fees. So you may want to talk to Chamber Commerce, but you did hear they're making that decision to start charging admission and help their event become funded, so they can hold it each year. I hope we see an enormous amount of people, and they keep track of who's coming in and how much they earn. So I look forward next week to seeing how many people attended. And I hope that the weather's good and people want to get out. I know a couple of years ago when I was there, it was a horrible, horrible rainy year, but it was full, and it was a good event. So I look forward to hearing from them after the event. Whoops, excuse me. So this answer will answer several of you that asked the same question in regards to the closing of the jail. It is ongoing with the people who are working hard to get all the answers for us. It is in a, as you know, like you've said, it's not a simple issue. I do have to echo that it is not solely based around finance. That was the catalyst for looking at finance, but it was the events that happened that brought us to this and the litigations. So in light of the county's budgets, what will happen in the future with litigations, we needed to take that project on and have a look at what was going on. And as you move into looking at it, of course, finances come to the top, and you have to say, what can you afford? What can you do? And there'll be some very detailed documents, some very schematic, some maps, showing options and different things that are all connected back to the work that people have been doing for what the look of that is, what we can do. But that is ongoing, and they're working very, very hard in overtime to get those answers. Mr. Wagner, thank you for commenting on the finance and the franchise agreements. I do have some more questions. I'm going to. I do have some more questions. I'm going to be talking to Public Works. And thank you for the reference to the King County Water Right Right Away. I appreciate that reference and I'll look at some things. And Mr. Schroder, I'll get your list and make sure I get qualified answers for you on your list. And make sure that I have a way to get back to you, so I can get you those answers. Okay, I'll get that from you if you, if you're going to leave first or just email me and then I can email you back. If I don't have you in my email. And the budgets, Mr. Smith, I know you, you said. Message not, didn't need to respond, but I'm interested because I know we can go online and click on different ears and look at detailed budgets. So I'll go in and see what you think is missing. I'll take a look at it for you. Because I appreciate those online documents. They've helped me a lot of times get an answer, look at some things. And Lisa, stay tuned, our auditor is going to be coming in later today because there's one more precinct that had to be adjusted. So she has some information for us later this afternoon about that precinct. Dallas Port, Mr. Rizzi, the wastewater treatment plant. I think we have some work we need to do there before we can go forward of the county divesting of that plant. Some of it is physical work at the plant that needs to be taken care of. It's my understanding and we cannot pass things on legally without making sure we're in good shape. And having things where it needs to be, so. And the site plan for your park, I will ask Public Works about that too. I know Wishram has went through that process. I believe Wishram accessed a grant to create that site plan. And then they could move forward with their park improvements, but let me check on that for you too. I'll ask Public Works that question today too. And Pat and Gabrielle, I always appreciate you. Thank you so much for caring for humanity, caring for our county. And always being a good support network. But thank you. Did you get? You were hiking fast.
First of all, sorry for, for being a little late. I was on the phone with Senator King on the bridge project. Senator King wanted me to let you know, Commissioner Zoller, thank you for all of your support for the bridge from his perspective. And he also wanted everyone to know that even though the entire county will not be in his district for the rest of the year. He still considers this his district. He, if he gets reelected, he will still continue to fight for the Hood River Bridge. Even though it is not within his new district, but he could still considers all of Clickattack County his, his people. So he wanted me to pass that along. And I apologize for a lot of you. I was on that call and I couldn't hear names or what exactly was going on. I can speak to Sheri, financial crisis. We have been talking about the financial situation of Clickattack County since the year I was elected. It has come up every year. The board has continued to try to find every nook and cranny to find efficiencies and save dollars. One of you had mentioned the roads and, and pulling dollars from the roads and making sure the road fund is completely separate. For a long time, the county put a million dollars of landfill dollars into the road fund. And that's what helped us maintain some of the best roads in the state. Because of the financial issues, those dollars that go into the road are one of the first things that started to get hit. We are now, this next year likely going to have no funds available out of that million dollars for the road fund. That is all getting pulled over into the general fund, so. All of the levers we have to pull in order to continue to provide services at the level they are have been pulled to this degree. You probably can guess the last thing I ever wanted to do was to raise the sales tax and take the other half a percent. I'm a very conservative, fiscally conservative person. That was an option that we didn't have an option in order to balance the budget. And we're getting to that point where it continues to get more and more tight. In terms of, everybody likes to say we give tax breaks to big corporations. Clickattack County does not give tax breaks to big corporations. What Clickattack County does is ask for mitigation. Clickattack County can ask for community benefits agreements that I'm in support of on these large projects. So that the local community can benefit from these overly large projects that come in to rural areas. What you, when you talk about tax breaks for these corporations, you need to look to the legislature. It is the legislature in Washington State that is giving tax breaks to corporations. It is the legislature that is setting the depreciation schedule. It is Department of Revenue who is requiring that we use the depreciation method rather than income based method. It is, it is the state organizations that are pushing for these changes. We as local government are subdivisions of state government and we are required to follow their guidance and rules in many ways. In the areas in which we can work around that, because it's a guidance, it's not a rule, we try to do that. In terms of what the commissioners do, we try to play in our own sandbox. I cannot tell the county assessor how to assess property tax. You've brought up Sheri that, and I believe Greg has, that we as county commissioners set the, the rates. For. The taxation, a lot of that is done through the assessor's office. We just set the amount of dollars. We sign our name to it, but a lot of that happens in other locations. So i- in essence, Ms. Arnold, I agree, tax breaks for special interests are not what I'm interested in. I believe I heard when I was in the other room, Greg talking about the appeals of the tax assessments. At the landfill and yes, that has far reaching consequences. We were, we spent county dollars in that tax appeal for upwards of two years, I believe, on that. It costs the county a lot of dollars for that tax appeal and. We as the Board of County Commissioners, that wasn't our decision. That is, a tax appeal is between the assessor, and this is a previous assessor, not a current assessor. And the PA's office, we have board, we, we don't have a say in that. Because again, we don't have control. Rick, I think when it comes to how District One got new equipment and roads, again, that's the road fund. If you have questions about the road fund, always look to the six year transportation plan. That's where you will see how projects get moved forward. Last year, you know, last couple of years, the big project was Courtney Road. This year, the big project is in District Three on Sundale Road. It goes back and forth and it's in a long involved process. We just don't throw millions of dollars around like it's nothing. The fairground question, yes, the entry fee is new and it's not up to us. That is up to the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Wagner on the franchise agreements. I've got questions on franchise agreements and whether or not we can charge for those in a, in a public right of way. We, we just did a franchise agreement with a company that wants to provide internet services. We didn't charge franchise agreements for that company. We don't, as far as I know, we haven't charged franchise agreements for other public utilities in any way. And I do know that that, that. Click Networks LLC is a private entity. You have to understand, and we've had these conversations in the past. When we treat one private company one way, we have to treat everyone else equally. As you've seen, we have, we have changed the way that we do business in terms of everybody who goes into the planning department and applies for something. Pays their fair costs of what that, what those costs are. The same thing, we've made changes over the last three years that try to raise revenues and planning in building. In all of our other departments in which we have the ability to raise revenues. We are looking at a situation in which we continue to pull that lever, that lever on revenues. But we also have to look at expenses as well. As well, we always should be looking at both sides of that scale. I didn't hear Lisa's comments.
Just about precincts.
Oh, the precincts, we'll be dealing with that later. Mr. Smith, the budgets, I can, I can promise you. We have an amazing group in fiscal services. They have been putting out the county budgets, they've been posting them online. We have our entire. Quarterly reports that are online. Make sure you have access to smart sheets. You, there is more information available to the public in both total form and graphic form than has ever been available in Clickattack County. And I would thank our finance, our head of finance, Jennifer Bartley on that. We get the same information. We have quarterly updates. You can see all those quarterly updates on our recordings if you can't find it online and if you need more information. She's also always available for questions when it comes to the budget. The budget is the most important thing because the budget sets what the county does. It's a book, it's that thick. Line by line item, everything you want to know is in that budget book. It's, it takes us six months to build the budget of each year just about. And it starts at the bottom up and it works all the way through. I'd be happy to help you, Mr. Smith, understand any parts of the budget if you have questions. And as for Mr. Rizzi, I will be asking Public Works where they are at on that O and M contract. Thanks for pointing it out. And as for the. The site plan with regards to the county park. I just want to be very clear and I was very clear when we first started talking about that park property. Parks are expensive, their maintenance costs are expensive. We don't have money to keep pouring into new programs. When we're looking at, we have to create as an unfunded mandate by the state, things like a coroner's position that's going to cost us $300,000 a year. Potentially up to 300,250 to 300. I want to invest in parks. I want you guys to be able to go forward and get WWRP grants in order to build your parks. I want you to be able to have site plans so that you can move forward. I also want to make sure that, that we, the county are able to continue to maintain that. I know in Skamania County, what's happened in a lot of their rural parks is the local community councils has taken over maintenance and operations. When I think of things like the Underwood Park, these are, these are the directions that, that other counties are having to go to keep their parks maintained. Just because when it comes to the budget and the dollars, we get 1% more money in terms of property taxes. I can assure you that our expenses are going up far more than 1%. That creates a delta and that delta is, has. Primarily been taken with, you know, we fill that in with the dollars that are coming from, it used to go to the road fund. That are now going into the, the, that are all coming from the landfill. Or to the point where there's nothing left. And so this is where we need all the public to be engaged. We need you to care about the budget. Because again, it comes down to priorities and what are those priorities for the county at? And if I missed anybody else, I'm really sorry. I will go back and review everyone's comments when it gets posted. And if I have any other answers, I'll try to reach out to you directly.
Thank you. Motion on the payroll. Do you need? Okay.
And thank you to. Thank you to everyone for your, your comments today. Thank you for being kind and considerate. And I will move forward, Madam Chair, with the consent agenda with seven items. I would make a motion.
And I will step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, consent agenda passes.
Madam Chair, from the update, I see fiscal services quarter one update is at 9:30. Did we add that to the agenda? We just moved it up. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't need a motion. Madam Chair, we have payroll accounts payable warrants in the amount of $219,159.35. And payroll benefit warrants in the amount of $1,173,516.26. For the date ending April 29th, 2024. My motion is to approve.
I will step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for payroll warrant and certification. Would you like to skip to fiscal services?
I know Jen has to get going. For all those who like to comment on the budget, here is lesson number one.
I, I wasn't going to share my screen this morning, but I, after the comments, I feel like I need to. So I'm just going to start out at, at the county homepage, right, and. Let me just click through a couple of seconds. So if we go to the government page or the government tab, we just go right down to fiscal services. It's going to pop up my webpage. From here, you have access going back to 2019, which was, 2019 was the last one that my predecessor had on. On the Board of County Commissioners. I, I've been in this role since 2021, February 2021. So this is where things started, 21 is where things started to morph and change online. So let's go to the latest one. If you go to. Well, from the homepage, when we start having hearings and whatnot, I, I post those with the links to the packet there. Go to 2023's page from here. 2023's budget book is complete and within that budget book, which is roughly 400 to 500 pages. There is a budget in brief in the very beginning part of that that gives a high level overview of what that budget's about. As well as the capital improvement plan in brief. You just click through these. And it will. Explain what the capital improvement plan is, what it supports, how it comes to play. What dollars are going into the capital improvement plan from what resource? And then the, the details related to it. Of course, the budget book. Which there's also a printed copy in our office of the budget book, of the commissioner's office. 2024 is not complete yet. It takes, it takes a bit, but as you can see, the first part of this is really just the budget in brief. Document structure, how to navigate this very large book. High level overview of what our county is all about, the adoption of the budget. How we build a budget. The timeline of it, which never changes. What we're currently, what's been talked about, Commissioner Anderson had stated in his. Response was how we've been talking about the structural deficit and the finances of the county since Commissioner Anderson was in office. Commissioner Anderson has been in office the same amount of time that I've been in my position. My predecessor was already talking about the structural deficit with the Board of County Commissioners prior to. And what the county was facing. Every county in the state of Washington faces the same structural deficit, which, which is where. Inflation is higher than what we are able to increase our revenues. We're only able to increase our revenues 1% and for us. That equates to about $50,000 a year, yet our expenses go up about 30. So. Explains how the county government's funds are structured and what those mean. So that when we're talking about all of this, that everybody can stay on track. Of course, the budget in brief. This lets you know where, at a high level. What your property tax, what the property tax dollars are, the revenues that we receive from sales tax and, and whatnot. Historically, what those have trended at. About your property taxes. Breaks down each dollar of your property tax and, and highlights where. That portion of the dollar goes, you know, 13, 13 cents of, of your dollar goes to the county general fund. That's all that the county has available to operate on. The road fund, 12 cents of that. So. I, I highly suggest looking at that page and to try and understand your, your property taxes. The landfill where those dollars are allocated to. And all the expenses and, and how those expenses roll into the community development, general government, which are mandated services. Human services and, and your public safety. And then how many people we have working for the, for the county and. And then how many people we have working for the, for the county and, and what that total actually means. I mean, roughly 75% of the general fund is people. So there's that portion of it. 2024, of course, is not complete. The budget doesn't usually get, the budget book doesn't usually get done until about this time of year, but the 2024 budget is there. It's just not in pretty and picture type form. It is in the line item form. So you can go here, you can see the property tax levies that were adopted. The budget that was approved and adopted and then by line item, revenue by line item and expense by line item. Like you said, this one's the details. So this one goes into all the nuts and bolts really of, of what those budgets are. So you're going to get the line item. And because this is a preliminary that was adopted, next year proposed would be 2024's numbers. But it's all there and available at any point in time. Also, if you go to these pages and do the quarterly reports, you could see all of the quarterly reports like Commissioner Anderson was saying, pull those up and look at those just like we did with the others. Also, Smart Sheets is free to sign in on and there's a digital dashboard for you to interact with here on the website that gets updated with those quarterly reports. So you could come in here and just kind of hover over these and it'll tell you exactly what it is. What it, how much it is all the way through. It will just ask you to sign up, but it is free.
Just a clarification, you said that our revenue goes up $50,000 a year and then you said our expenses go up 30?
Roughly.
Our, our overall expenses go up $30,000 a year?
In the, in the project funds anyway. So like any building funds and whatnot, those, those could be going up 30% and half.
30%?
30%.
So you said 30. You didn't say percent and I was like, that sounds, that sounds like a good number.
I was in my zone. I'm sorry. But you know, inflation, employees' costs, that's 4% increase. Inflation was running nine at one point in time, but in those building project funds, we were seeing 30% increases when we could really only increase that property tax revenue. 1%, which equates with, with new construction, but the 1% equates to about $50,000.
Right.
It's not sustainable and, and it's been, and it's a problem across the state. We've been able to provide more services than most counties, so that's really due to the landfill.
And when you look at those numbers and revenues, would you agree that we are still the lowest or close to the lowest taxes both for
We are.
property taxes, sales tax?
Sales tax was still the lowest.
We are the lowest in the state.
Yes.
So we have levers that we can pull here locally that other counties in the state that are maxed out on, on their, their revenues, they don't have to pull. For them, it's just cuts.
Right. I'll see if I can try and make this. I handed you out two groups of packets there to you. The first one is going to be that smart sheet, which is the tabloid size pages. I don't know how well it's going to display on my laptop screen. Commissioner Anderson informed me that it's challenging, so I will try though. The first one we're going to go over, it will be the revenue. Okay. Yeah. So the revenue one is, we're actually, this is revenue, all funds. We tend to not collect to target in the first quarter because most of our, our property taxes are really are collected in the second quarter and the fourth quarter. So there's an ebb and a flow to the revenue. We are sitting at 19%. Target would be 25. But we are additionally, we're 1% higher at this year than we were last year at this time of year. I really, I really don't see much of a concern at all. Most of our revenues, like you said, are related to property tax or timber tax. Those, those come in when, when they come in, in those other quarters. Grants, a lot of our budget is, is grant funded. Of course, those come in during reimbursables. Their fiscal years are different than ours. We usually see those tie out closer towards the end of the year.
On the revenue side? On the revenue side, where are we at? Sales use. It's showing 20, 23% of over, but I remember when we talked before, it sounded like we were running about 8% down.
That was last year.
Last year we were 8%.
Last year we were, we trended 8% below our budget the entire year. That's where we finished off. This year is looking significantly better and the consumer confidence is higher so far this year than it was last year as well.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't foresee that dipping or dropping at this point.
Okay. What would that, our budget last year to this year, did we, did we reduce what we figured the sales tax was going to come in and is that why we're closer to budget? The year-over-year amount, first quarter?
That's a really good question. I'd have to go back and look. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
I don't expect you to.
Okay.
Remember that we reduced it.
I, I don't recall consciously reducing it, but I could have.
Okay, continue.
Any other revenues that you have questions on? Are, the, the only other highlight here is, you know, the, the Fed really hasn't done anything with interest rates and that's working out to our advantage. Looks like interest earnings is going to save our bacon again this year, sitting at 60% of budget collected. We increased that from last, that interest earnings budget from last year. When I say we, the treasurer and I met and, and talked about what number we would be comfortable with and we were still very conservative with that number. So that's, that's looking really good for the first quarter, but of course, interest earnings will not continue like that year-over-year. I don't expect it to continue like that even by quarter four, so. We're at the mercy of the Fed.
Another one on here, state shared revenue 387, we've received out of 300. What is, is that come from? Right there. That's our forest tax? And is, that's on our, our county, county tax? Our county forest lands?
I'd have to double check before I answer that publicly, but I believe you were correct.
Okay. And then when do we usually get our federal entitlements?
I don't know that that comes in and it
Is it random?
I think it's random.
Okay. Again, this is compared to what the Board of County Commissioners had to work with four or five years ago. This is leaps and leaps and bounds ahead of where we were. We used to be practically in the dark comparatively to where we're at today with all of the ability that Jen has pulled together. She's really brought us into the 21st century and I can't thank her enough.
No, I agree.
This is not a part of your packet, but it, it is within the, the shared workspace for the board to go and in view. You guys have view access only. You do not have the ability to modify or comment therefore, in order to not violate any public meeting. But this one here is where I track just those top five revenue sources that we, that we have. This top portion would be the general fund. This bottom portion is all funds together. With this one added in would be the motor vehicle gas tax that goes to the road fund specifically. Just try to keep a pulse on, on those revenues and how they, how they're trending, where they're coming in at. We, although it's not reported in here, because it'll fall into quarter two. I do have the notice from the, the landfill of what our second quarter payment will be and, and that one is, has put us in a position to where I'm pretty comfortable with, we will, we will hit budget there. So that, that is a sigh of relief, but we budgeted really conservatively with that, that loss of potentially $1.6 million. We budgeted the landfill at 7.8, which historically has been 9.3, 9.5. And I believe we'll come in just, just over eight, maybe. So this is going to be the, the second one or the second three of the first handout that I handed you. This is the expenses. First portion is going to be the general fund. The other two pages are my comments related to each each row that is highlighted red. Red would mean that it's over budget or it's over target. So it's trending to be over budget. Some of these things are not concerning. The auditor at 26%, that's not concerning to me. Remember when we budgeted these, when we built the budget, we budgeted COLAs in a completely separate line item outside of each department. We did that the year before. It seemed to work pretty well. Because a lot of departments have vacancies and we don't budget for vacancy rate. This allows that ebb and the flow in, on the personnel side of things. So the auditors is related to, to COLAs. West District also related to COLAs. These general fund budgets are typically pretty tight, especially the courts. Adult probation, also COLAs also had an employee payout for retirement.
So for retirements, employee payouts, that just pull comes right out of their budget and they
And we have to do a supplemental for that.
Supplemental, but you usually
We do not. The payouts, the vacation, the, the sick, the comp time, the floating holidays, those are unfunded liabilities for us. We do not, we do not budget that, which we could look at doing so, but they're all, they're all unfunded, unbudgeted liabilities that are just hanging out there. In the event that somebody retires, we have to do a supplemental to get that into the budget.
Do you know, is that generally accepted amongst how counties do it in other areas?
It's very, it varies really depending on the county.
Because I understand, you know, we've always had, you know, with the vacancy rates, usually you've got that slush and that flush in order to do that. But as we continue to get closer and closer to expenses versus reality, is that something we need to start thinking about changing so that at least we have a fund available for the payouts is, you know, because we've got an entire generation of payouts coming?
Well, and I want to, and I don't mean to correct you, but since I've been in this position, the vacancy rate that's in, in the department's budgets, I haven't seen one really cover a payout. So that, that extra in there for that, that vacancy, I have, we've had to do supplemental for every retirement. Retirement's just, I mean, they're usually a lot of built up banks in there, especially long-term employees that were hired before, you know, a certain date, they get, they have an extra portion of that that they get. So it's just one of those things that we're, we just have to know that it's there and there is a potential with the new ERP system. I know that that Finance Steering Committee is looking at everything and that could be one of those things that gets adjusted. It will not make budgeting easier.
Well, I guess from, I understand that it won't make budgeting easier, but I'm also looking at it from the grants perspective and overhead perspective that if we're putting a little bit aside each, you know, from, from everything, that's something we can pass along on our grants.
I'm not 100% sure that we would be able to pass that along. Usually it's, I mean, I know like even, and I'm going to use Public Works as an example, like their, their vacation, their sick, tho, those non-work days, they, they're actually budgeted and reported in benefits because they're not like a lot of grants, you can only
Right.
get reimbursement for actual worked time. So. So I'm not sure, but it's definitely something that I can pass along to the Finance Steering Committee so we can be taking a look at it. You know, each, other counties just do things wide, widely different. I'm, I was just looking at Pierce County, you know, and they budget vacancy rates. So they have a formula there to budget that where we don't. Okay. So the next one would be budget and IT. That's where I'm housed, IT is housed, we share that budget, similar to the building budget and code compliance. IT just runs, the beginning of the year, they always, they have, they're just front-loaded in expenditures. So the, all the county's annual subscriptions, they get paid there in the first part of the, the year. Additionally, they bought, they purchased a server. So that shot that up, the 44% is not going to be the trend going forward. Therefore, it's not concerning. It was just heavy front-loaded expenses in this first quarter. Building inspection, I suspect that's COLAs as well. Public defense, this one's being addressed in the supplemental. The budget was built before the new contracts were finalized. Now that the contract's been finalized, we just need to update that budget. And the sheriff's budget is, as a whole, is trending over at this point in time. The sheriff's budget is made up of multiple sub, sub-department budgets within. There are a handful of those that are trending over to some significance as well. Admin, patrol, the jail and marine within there are trending over. With this layout, I've also added a burn rate column and anticipated shortfall as well as a run rate remaining months of budget availability. At this point in time, nine would be the target. So you can kind of see where we're at in some of these. If they continue to not make any operational changes or adjustments in their spending, you know, this is how many months they would have left of those. Coming down here. See, the sheriff has a marine fund that's, you know, again, if they continued to spend at the rate that they're spending, not make any changes, it would, they're currently at 45%, so they would only have about just shy of four months remaining. Elections, elections just has, they have the fund balance to cover what they have going on right now. They were finished up the remodel, which wasn't budgeted. I don't think it was in that original budget. And then they had the precinct GIS mapping that was definitely not in the budget. So that's being addressed in a supplemental. Victim witness, that's COLA related. Auditors ONM, we made a decision as the finance team to handle all of the ERP transitions and the payments for that out of the auditors ONM. That, that fund handles oh, maybe it was actually non-departmental. Either way. Oh, maybe it was actually non-departmental. Either way, um. So there are some things that happened out of that fund that um are countywide and so those things just didn't. They weren't tied out completely in the budget during the budget build process. Um, we've earmarked all those funds for the ERP transition. They they're just housed in a different locations, which it's all a part of the um supplemental to get those things in there. Um, the sheriff's investigation fund is at twenty nine percent. In um the supplemental packet, you'll see a note in regards to um Fund One Thirty Five, so I'll just touch base on. Um, on it here, it's not highlighted as an issue here, um, but it one oh seven and one thirty five. Merged at the end of last year. We're still working on um finishing up all of the accounting of that merger. Once that is done, um, this fund is definitely on my list to just tie things out. Make sure um the way it was budgeted is going to be sufficient and and monitor that. And work with um Jeff and Debbie to make sure that all is well in that fund. Public health is completely grant funded. They're just cautionary. It's just because they're close to the twenty five percent. Licensing is the new fund that um because Department of Licensing fees are now considered restricted funding. So it, they got moved into its very own fund. This is kind of the startup of it. I will see how this one goes, but with new funds come with just the challenges of like what's really needed in there and whatnot. So we'll see how it all goes. And just for the public, the one hundred funds that we're talking about, um, those are restricted revenues. They cannot be used in other locations. So we can't take, let's say, that gas tax or roads portion of that property tax. We can't use that for other services. It it has to be used on road. Any questions regarding the expenses? This report will be published online. This is the quarter one report, just a high level overview of um where we're at in that first quarter. As I just talked about, there are a few um budgets that I'll be keeping an eye on. You know, the end of last year, the board had asked me to work with the sheriff's office to help monitor their their budget. Due to the last minute emergency supplemental at the end of the year, so still still working through that. Um, this isn't at a glance. As a whole, all all funds, we brought in eleven point three million dollars. We spent ten point two. That gives us a net cash flow of one million. Our revenue highlights. This page just takes those top five revenue sources that we've received just to keep them on our focus. You know, if one of those was to tank, we'd be in a lot of trouble, so I like to keep an eye on that. And then rolling those up into exactly what they are, taxes, licensing implements, grants and appropriations. Um, charges for services, that's where the landfill would fall into. It's not only the landfill though. Uh, fines and penalties miscellaneous or interest earnings fall into there. And these other increases, those are internal related, but they are on the on the report, they're on the inner report. They do add up to the total budget amount. Um, this pie chart is really to identify how much of our budget is grants. You know, the county does a really good job at really going after those grant dollars that's available to us. This, this is pretty much the same rundown that you just got, only added in our cash balances. Expenses that we just went over. And then um this year and probably going forward because our budgets keep getting tighter and tighter with the with the um financial constraints that we are currently in. Um, I'm starting to do a a run rate and putting that on a graph so that we could see if the. If those funds continue to spend as they've been spending, not making any operational changes, where where are they gonna cross that zero dollar line and run out of money? July, you know, Oc- October here, you know, into December here. So that it it's easier to look at things in a visual than try and dig it through it in the numbers, in my opinion. This next page is the um general fund at a glance. Um, general fund brought in three point five million dollars, but spent four point five. So we were at a a net cash flow of nine hundred ninety six thousand dollars. We do have the cash available in there. Please do not misunderstand that the cash is available. It's just the ebb and the flow of the revenues. Same concept here, highlighting in the general fund what our revenue sort, top revenue sources are. Um, and showing in that pie chart. What those make up now, grants don't make up as much um of a piece of a pie in the general fund as they do in the rest of the funds. Um, there's not a whole lot of grants available for like court services and treasurer services and all, you know, those types of things, so. That's the reason for that. You're, the taxes really make up for those.
Can you explain a little bit? People will probably see the eight percent on the landfill and go, oh, my God. But can you explain how that, how the treasurer moves that at different points?
When looking at the landfill um dollars and the amount received, you really wanna look at the all all funds. Um, so that it captures the entire payment amount. Um, the treasurer will deposit according to a deposit schedule that we build um at the, you know, beginning of every year to really. Some some funds, some offices really need front loaded. And so the, there will be a bigger portion of that landfill revenue go to those other places first and then the general fund. We typically have the cash in the general fund and the fund balance to be able to buffer things for a little bit. Um, so it's usually the last to get funded.
Thank you.
Was that enough?
Yep, nope. I think that that helps people when they look at it because it's really easy to go through online and be like, well, that doesn't look good or that doesn't look good. There's usually a reason behind the things that you jump out at you.
Yeah, you'll definitely see that change over the quarters. Um, this is just the revenue by department, what what departments, general fund departments don't. Tend to have a lot of revenue that they bring in. Again, these are mandated services. Unfunded mandated services such as our court services, um, you know, probationary services. Assessor, auditor, um clerk, those types of things, they just. Unfortunately, that's just how legislation flows from the top down. But there are some and, you know, we have to make sure that we are not just monitoring our expenses, but also making sure that we're bringing in the revenue that we. Had budgeted to bring in in order to be able to expend the total amount that we were expected to spend. So again, those expenses right there that we've already gone through, little note of what I've already talked about there at the bottom. Run rates um for all of these, you know, again, where. Where we're looking at running on money if operation change, operational changes are not made and spending continues to spend. Um, at the rate that it's currently being spent at. Any questions?
So. For people that look at this, I mean, we get the quarterly reports and there's a lot of, you know, the revenues and the expenses kind of bounce around, you know. IT is really high at the beginning, others, you know, on a, are on a straight line path. And so when you're looking at it, are you primarily looking at Q one of this year versus Q Q one of last year? So that you can look at the changes so that you can see where the red flags are versus.
I I already know those numbers. They're kind of ingrained in me like a a roundabout figure. But yes, I will go back to um quarter one of a prior year and be like, okay, where were they trending at? Um, and what was the reasoning why? Because I usually have notes related to that. I will pull detail to that and I tried to make note like. Budget and IT, that was so significant because normally it's higher, but like thirty, but not forty four. Um, so, you know, I I um went back to the their actual detail report. Oh, there's a capital purchase for over a hundred thousand dollars right there. Paul Randy, hey, that's a server, right? Yep, that's a server. And I can usually pick those things up without really having to get too much engagement.
I'm just trying to help for the people that are gonna be looking. It sometimes makes a lot of sense to run Q one versus Q two on two screen. Or Q one versus Q one from a previous year and then look at the the two in comparison to each other.
Yes.
Because the snapshot shot in time is difficult to see.
And it changes, it'll, it'll change by today, end of day today. But yes, that's, that's what I did to go double check where our revenues were coming in, where they needed to be. Anything else?
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for um making the adjustment and squeezing me in earlier than later. I appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Hunter, Public Works.
It's okay. Bravo, Lisa.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We're ready.
Okay, um, sent agenda went through. Uh, I, we have a couple pay estimates, uh, first and final to Oliver's. For the election security office that we completed. And uh, one to Northwest Naturals. Homes in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and eighty and that's for the first phase of the courtroom. On the construction program, the crushing contract, the contractors moved over to Fisher Hill and we're now working on. Base course and coverstone. Uh, Bickleton area paving, pre-leveling has started and uh, that's a federally funded project. On the east end of the county, it's actually the second paver we've done there. And uh, we are planning a third paver. So there's quite a bit happening on that end of the county. Sundale, which is another east end project, it just seems those qualify for the grants. Um, because that's where we get our money to get to do these projects. And that's Sundale Highway Eight. Uh, contracts and bonds will be sent to the board next week. And the pre-constructions is scheduled for Wednesday, the eighth with the start date um tentatively for May thirteenth. Um, we've increased, uh, are trying to ratchet up the schedule so we can get the state to pay. All of the project and not just, if we carry it over to next year, which we typically do. We will foot the bill, the taxpayers of the county will fit the bill for the for the surfacing. So we've ratcheted up so we can get the state to pay. Again, while people say, you know, we shouldn't spend money on roads, you need to spend money on roads. You gotta get from point A to point B. And we do that by getting most of, most of our money comes either from the state or from the feds. So it, just to let people know.
So Jeff, we usually hold things over to let it settle over the winter and then we come in and fix it and then we pave it. Out there, because you're so far east, are you not worried about that as much?
Well, we're concerned. I won't get, but we will keep a closer eye on what's going. I mean, we keep a close eye, but we'll really ratchet it down. And uh, but I mean, it's a quarter of a million dollar difference for us. As, and we don't have the money, just as you said, we've lost a million dollars a year and we don't have the money to do it. And you don't wanna spend that, you don't wanna spend five million dollars and not put a surface on. I mean, essentially, again, but the five million dollars is not county taxpayer. Hey, it is, we all pay gas.
Right.
But. The county does not pay five million dollars in gas tax a year. I would be shocked if we paid five million dollars in gas tax. It'd be a lot of money.
Yeah, I don't think.
We, you know.
It'd be a lot of gas.
Yeah, it'd be a lot of gas. So, you know, we get our fair, we get more than our fair share. Okay, on the road design, we're uh, we're moving forward still with uh, the Sunnyside overlay project. Again, another grant funded project, which is an overlay in Sunnyside on the west side, needs to be done. The asphalt is past its lifespan. Um, again, we got state funding for that. Uh, bridge repair bundles, our bridges are in really good shape. And the reason they are is because we've been very successful getting fed dollars to do the bridges. Um, preliminary work continues on Snowden. It's a scoping project. Um, that is federally funded also, uh, but it is not for the people to get worked up. It's not, uh, I know the Snowden community council has said something. It's just looking at alternatives. We're not, there's nothing to build or anything.
But it is on the six year road plan.
It is on the six year. It has to be.
Yes.
But it needs to be anyway, because eventually that area, as it continues to grow. It will, um, the size of the road is not big enough to maintain all that. It's the busiest road we have.
The busiest county road.
Yes, busy county road in the county, yes. Okay, on the maintenance side, uh, brimming and shoulder work continues. We're almost done there on the east side. And that's uh, because the paver is moving in. West side, we're crack sealing. Upcoming facilities, uh, we'll, real quick, sale barn, we poured the footings. The footings report on Friday, peers are scheduled to be poured this Friday. Uh, Superior Court remodel, uh, first phase is complete. We actually are ahead of schedule. Uh, we are cleaning up this week, finishing up a little touch up paint and um, so court can be set up next week. If you haven't seen it, it is a, it is a major change. Not how it sits, but the lighting and everything else in the courtroom is considerably different. Um, events, we have fire on the mountain this weekend and then home and garden, they start setting up on Wednesday. Uh, Fuel Island, we're to the point now where we're gonna start selecting our infrastructure, our pumps and stuff. To move that forward to construction, hopefully before too long. Uh, Beef Barn, um, west end doors were installed last week and now they're up. HVAC contracts Pioneer Center is next week. Um, courthouse was completed last week. Um, for Superior Court unit, that unit still needs to be programmed and it's scheduled to start tomorrow. Sados Pass, they're scheduled to come out and do the camera, so I'm sure it'll probably snow this week to be as sad now that usually works. Um, binge and white salmon cleanup went well and that's pretty much all I have.
Easy.
I don't know if you heard during public comment, but uh. Dalzport is looking for an update on where we're at with the park. Uh, as well as an RFP on um. The sewage treatment plant.
Well, we've, we've um. For the park, we've looked at getting our resources together. We went out for a grant to do countywide. Because where Wishram went out and they got a planning grant to plan their park. They, there's no funding the county can get there unless the county comes up with the money and, you know, there's RCO funding. But you have to have a county plan in place, a comprehensive park plan. You don't have that. Uh, we tried to get a grant. We run successful. There's a lot of competition for that. We could try again. Part of that would be. You know, we could have done that. We could have went out for a planning grant or just that park. But again, we're still, we do that and we still can't actually do any construction on it. So by the time you get the planning grant, you move forward with the construction, now you're going back and re redoing everything that you've done. Things change, people's minds change, people change. So ideally, the best thing is to get the county comprehensive plan in place first. That's how we've looked at it. Then you can, at that time, you'll look at the individual parks. Wishram did. Do, but the school did that. The school could do that. The problem Dalzport has is there's no school there. It's Lyle School District, so they would have to talk Lyle School District, but all they're gonna get is, again, is a comprehensive plan. It's Lyle School District, so they would have to talk Lyle School District, but all they're going to get is, again, is a comprehensive plan. For that one park. But the only, the people that are going to get the money to do the park would be the county. And county doesn't qualify for that until we get a comprehensive park plan in place. So we, you know, again, our, our thought is we would work on that.
So that's, that's one way with the county leading the project.
Yes.
Now, is there another way to do it like we used to do it way back when? Where we set aside a portion of that area and we say, community, this is your park, this is your owner, not ownership, but this is. Build what you want, do what you want, maintain it yourself, and we just set that aside. Because otherwise, we're looking at years and years where maybe we, you know, of that triangle, we put a, a two acres and say, do what you want with this as a community, whether you want to make it a garden or whatever you want to do, manage it yourselves. Is that an option?
That is an option, I caution you on that option because you know who is responsible.
I'm, well.
If it goes and nobody takes care of it and it doesn't get mowed. You know, they've done that in the past and that's why I caution you. They did it in Trout Lake and the county ended up with it back and then it becomes a very much of a burden to the count. Cause then we have to make it right because we're responsible.
So that's where I'm wondering is if we could possibly do an MOA or MOU with the community council or something. That they would be the, the front of it and they're going to take it on and if they don't manage it, it goes back to the way it is, but. In essence, giving them their own destiny if they want it versus, cause I mean, we could, we could apply five or six times. And ten years go by at the, at the state level for a planning level grant just to start planning, let alone building. Where this way, at least they could, they could get started with it and if they want to make something themselves using their own dollars as a community. Then we could allow them to do it and knowing that there's risks on both sides, but I, I'm well aware of how competitive that the state grants are.
They're very competitive, um. You have, again, I, I caution that because I've had to clean up things like that through my career and it is very painful. Because it's still a county property, so it still falls under fair bid laws. And everything else, and if they don't do that and somebody comes back and sues. Guess who's on the hook?
Right, that would be, we'd build all that into the MOA or MOU.
Right, you could build it in, but ultimately you're still responsible.
I mean, I'm just trying to find an answer for the community, knowing that, you know, they put a lot of effort into it and designing their own stuff and and that they want to do that and maybe one of the answers is, is we shave off a section of it and surplus it as a park and then let them bid on it so it's, so they can own it or an organization.
Well, we have to check on that. Again, I'm not trying to disagree because we, I've done some research on this recently with with the prosecuting attorney's office on Trout Lake. I don't know how it's written, Trout Lake, you cannot do that.
Right, I know.
If you get, if you get, it goes back to the errors. If you do anything with it outside of maintaining it as a park, it can go back to the, that could be the same way in Dallas Port. Because it, it was, it was done as part of a, uh, when they created the town in Dallas Port. And those fall under a completely different set of rules than Trout Lake.
Yes.
Because it was deeded as park property to the county. So could you surplus it? Maybe you could. Um, but what is, you'd have to put, I mean, we could look at, there's options we can look at. And we could still look at, you know, working some things with them a little at a time if they're patient too.
I, I just think we're, we're hearing from the community council, they want to see something and I'd love to be able to take them, option A, option B, which way do you want to go? And then we can make the decision once they get on board.
We'll look at a couple of different options of how to do that and, but again, I will caution you. If it does, you know, community councils change, people change and it is a liability.
I'm just looking, you know, just across the river, we've got the, you know, uh, Underwood Park property that the community council's taken on. And it's in great shape and they're doing a great job managing it. And it can be very good and so I would hope that, that Dallas Port could do the same considering they're the ones asking for it.
Right, it, it can be very good. I go back to my hometown, Missoula had that same thing. And it was good for many years, they had community gardens, then the, the council changed, I mean, it wasn't, it was, the city had it, but they turned it over to a group. So they didn't want to spend the money because they were on the, wasn't they didn't want to spend the money, I shouldn't have said that, they didn't have the money available. So they turned it over to a group, they did it very well for years and years. And then they didn't do it well and somebody dumped a bunch of toxic waste into it. City put batteries and everything else, city ended up paying millions of dollars to clean it up. Cause nobody's watching. See, it went from, it was a great community, then all of a sudden, less and less and less, then nobody cared, then people started dumping.
Don't give people ideas to start dumping things on that property.
Okay.
Just tell you the worst, but.
If you could come back and let us know.
We'll, we'll look into different things and the, the percentage of, you know, what you could have li- liable. I still think we can work through some of the traditional ways to, to help them out.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Um, department update, Sheriff Songer and Carmen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I started off with item one, there were a total of four thousand four hundred and fifty-four calls for service. From January first, two thousand twenty-four to April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of six hundred and five civil papers during the same time period. Item two. I want to give a big thanks out to Posse Deputy Brian Paul for donating sixty thousand dollars to the Clickatuck County Sheriff's Office for a new canine dog. The sixty thousand will pay for the purchase of the new dog and training for the dog and handler. It will also pay for equipment and other expenses needed for the canine program. I will note not one cent is coming out of the county budget for this new canine dog. On March twenty-sixth, Lou Marcela Selas, from the Golden Dale Sentinel covered the event. For Posse Deputy Paul handed over the sixty thousand dollar check for the new canine dog to the Sheriff's Office Administration. Again, a big thanks to Clickatuck County Sheriff's Posse Deputy Brian Paul for his donation and for being an outstanding patriot. Item three. Clickatuck County Sheriff's Office Town Hall Meeting. Sheriff Songer, me. Will be holding a town hall meeting on Saturday, May twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-four, from ten AM to noon at the Golden Dale Grange located at two-two-eight East Darlin in Golden Dale, Washington. We will discuss the role of a county sheriff. And the pros and cons of the county commissioners, Lori Zoller and Jacob Anderson. Closing down the Clickatuck County Jail, Office Jail and contracting our inmates with Northern Regional, Northern Oregon Regional Correction Facility, also known as Norcore. By the way, located in the Dells, Oregon. We will be discussing the, uh, I got ahead of myself, I plan to start our town hall meetings with a video that outlines the role of deputy duties of the county sheriff, followed by a discussion of the jail situation. In my town hall meeting, the citizens attending will be allowed to verbally ask questions and make comments without their questions or comments being screened by a monitor, moderator. My boss and your boss, by the way, is the citizens we serve in Clickatuck County. So I hope to see you or any of the citizens that are concerned at the town hall meeting. To hear their questions and comments on the above subject matter. They can reach me by my email, bob@clickatuckcounty.org or my cell number, five oh nine, two six one, eighteen thirty-three. KCSO would like to hold town hall meetings in the following areas to reach many citizens, as many citizens as possible. We have our first one on May twenty-fifth at the Golden Dale Grange. We intend on scheduling White Salmon, Trout Lake, Glenwood, Clickatuck, Dallas Port and Bickleton. I would like to make a suggestion to the board, we all know there's a lot of ooh rah over this idea of contracting with Norcore. And there's some strong feelings on both sides of the issue. I would suggest to the board of county commissioners, hold a special election and have the people of Clickatuck County vote on one of four choices. Do not shut down our current jail, make improvement that may be needed operating under KCSO. B, build a new jail operating under KCSO. Contract with the jail, for jail inmates with Norcore in the Dells, Oregon. Last item, the board of county commissioners take over the current jail and run it themselves. Those are the four choices this public, the citizens would be able to vote on in a special election. After all, we work for the citizens, we are their servants and they should have a choice. And what happens, because it's shutting down the jail affects more than just shutting down the jail. There's sixteen employees be looking to lose their jobs. And that's sad. Uh, I can tell you right now, the morale in that department is not good in the jail. Already heard that some are looking possibly for another job. All because it was put out there, April twelfth was a cutoff. And the negotiations started with the, with those employees for severance packages by the end of April. Through the union and the county. It was all BS. I tracked it down, yes, there was comments that you folks made inquiries at Norcore. You did that. But there was no written contract at all. And I was told it'd be five to six months before a contract could even be put in place. Not to mention the fact I was also informed by those two sheriffs that sit on the board at Norcore. That any arrest made in Clickatuck County would have to be booked in Clickatuck County and medically cleared before they could be transported to Norcore to be housed. There's a lot of other issues, a holding cell, a booking area, because of transports from inmates from Norcore over here to court, we'd have to have staff uh, with those people and also doing the transport, because Norcore are not going to do the transport. Anyway, there's many, many other issues. That'd have to resolve before you'd see a contract with Norcore. And we're aware of those issues. In the long run, I don't believe it's a savings to the county at all. But that's something that you folks are researching and, and should research. But also think you ought to take into consideration fixing what may need to be needed fixed in our current shift. And allowing it to run the way it's running. Now, I understand that liability is always a concern. It's a big concern. But if liability drives the day. Those deputies would not even crawl in their car, we would not even do a booking. Yeah, you have to be concerned about liability, but you don't run scared because of it. Anyway, enough is enough. Um, I'm going to return it over to Under Sheriff Carmen for her comments and Lauren Coles on a prisoner transport. That's why he's not here, but she has information from Lauren's responsibility and duties. And Karen has items on the budget. Thank you.
So April's been, uh, a busy month for training, Deputy Howard and Reserve Deputy Ken Clinton attended the Basic Marine Law Enforcement training, April fifteenth through the nineteenth in Tri-Cities. The boat that we have on loan from State Parks was taken up to Tri-Cities for this training and was actually there for the full month of April. Uh, so it could be involved in their, they have a three week long program, every week a different training group coming in. Uh, end of the week or early next week, we'll be going back up to pick up the boat. Detective Bianchi attended the Children's Justice Conference, April twenty-second through the twenty-third. Second quarter defensive tactics training was held for both corrections and patrol deputies. Uh, we are also including outside agencies, uh, Golden Dale and White Salmon to participate as we all uh, on scene together or in the jail together, uh, so it's important to train together. Deputy Melton and Deputy Vorus attended a forty-hour CIT training in Hood River. Traffic safety, we've been doing a lot of traffic safety, um, participation, the first quarter of the year, well, the first four months, I guess. So this is data from January first to April twenty-ninth. Deputies have written two hundred and eighty-three traffic infraction citations. They've issued four non-traffic infraction citations. They've issued sixty-five criminal traffic citations and twenty-five non-traffic criminal citations. I've attached the documents printed from the Washington Traffic Safety Commission and this data outlines fatality fatality collisions in Clickatuck County and it also has data for other counties as well across the state. We know that traffic safety is important, we also know that we as adults are responsible when we drive and we need to be making, making sure that we are not driving impaired, that we're following the rules of the road. We know that distracted driving causes lots of crashes and we can see that daily on the news when people are injured or killed. Um, from these types of collisions. We had a fatality collision last week in Bickleton and I do believe the result of that was, um, speed and possibly under the influence of intoxicants. Um, that individual lost their life because they chose to break the law. They didn't, um, hit anybody else and for that, I guess we should be thankful.
Did we see a change, Carmen? Uh, we go back, it goes back to twenty twenty, but from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty because there were so many fewer people on the roads in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one with COVID?
Uh, that could be part of it, um, and, and I think right now. I'm amazed at how many people in this county are driving with a big cellphone in their hand. Or driving without seat belts, they drive by the office, we're standing out there and they've got a a phone in their hand. It's ridiculous. They're not, especially school zones, when I drove school bus, parents on the phone, what good examples they are. On a phone, going through the school zone, distracted when there's all these little kids running around. It's terrifying, it could be you, it could be your grandchild, it could be another family member or a close friend that are hit by distracted drivers. Sergeant Riggers, uh, this year stopped the same lady in White Salmon that he did last year for distracted driving. And she again threw a fit about being stopped with a cellphone in her hand and using the same excuse that she did last year. It's appalling, she is in a field that she knows firsthand the results of distracted driving. It, it's out of control. Some of our statistics, um, law incidents just for the first twenty-nine days of April, um, this year. Nine hundred ninety-three responses. up from 705 in the same timeframe last year. Now, this data does reflect all of the sheriff's office, Golden Dale PD, and Benjamin White Salmon PD. That's a lot of calls that we're responding to. We're stretched thin. The calls of burglaries, property crimes are going up. The amount of drugs coming in this county continues to be on the rise. The continued just ill disregard for people's property, stealing out of grocery stores, whatnot, is out of control. We need more deputies on the road. Unfortunately, with budget cuts and continued budget cuts, that's not going to happen, and we know that. We rely on our citizens to report. Call 911, call the non-emergency number, whatever it takes. We have to get people documenting these kinds of crimes. We have to get suspect information. We have to get them prosecuted. We have to get them into jail. We have to keep our citizens safe. And the only way to do that is boots on the ground and being able to respond to these calls. The addition of another canine to our department is going to be instrumental. Profi can only track so long. His lot, the one track he did last month where he was out there for a couple of hours. Normally, they would bring in a secondary dog to continue that search because that dog gets worn out. So having the secondary dog available will be a benefit to the county and to the rep, not only to Profi for giving him a little bit of a break, but also just, we could have dual incidents where we need a dog in multiple places. Our average travel time for KCSO is 25 minutes travel time to a given call. And then we spend an average of 30 minutes at a scene, and that's just an average. So that's a lot of time that these guys do. And if you figure 993 calls, I realize that Golden Dale and Benjamin White Salmon don't have as long as travel time, but they are still spending these averages, you know, of 30 minutes, right?
So that includes the cities? So if we, have you run the numbers not including the cities?
So the, the 25 minutes is just for KCSO?
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah. Yep, sorry. Some of these reports you can run, you can separate, segregate out county versus cities. Some of the, the way the reports are, you're not able to. I'll give a quick update on the, from Chief Coop. Currently, there are 34 people in custody, including four receiving mental health treatment at other facilities. Employees, we have one corrections deputy gone for US Army training. In addition, we now have two open corrections deputy positions. RFP says, like I told you at our last meeting, the RFP for the electronic medical records went out to the public and we received one proposal from Sapphire Health. This project is currently on hold while we look into the $2 million grant through the state for that and other related things. New equipment, the new clothes washer has been installed as in, and is in use. I presented some fairly new technologies to this board in previous meetings over the last year. One of those technologies is health monitors, which keeps track of an inmate's pulse and oxygen levels. Whether either of those two things get outside of a safe parameter, a visual and audible alarm goes off in the control room, alerting deputies that an inmate is in crisis so they can respond very quickly. Washington County's risk pool will give the county enough money in a grant to fund seven inmate bracelet monitors. I'd prefer a monitor on every inmate because anyone at any time can have a medical emergency. The seven is a good start. The risk pool will pay for the installation and one year of service for seven, which is close to the $25,000. We just need your signatures to get this started. And that's the end of his report.
Does the risk pool have dollars to pay for the future years? Or is this just going to be something that we have to find the dollars for after this?
You'll have to find the dollars.
We'll have to find the dollars.
Can you give an overview of that $2 million grant? Have you applied for it?
And so I attended a meeting last week. It's through the HCA. It's the new healthcare reentry program through the HCA. I talked to Erin Quinn following that meeting because there's lots, lots of parameters that go with that, right? There's different starting dates. We definitely wouldn't be ready for a June start date to jump into that program. But foreseeable, we could start in, I think it was an October or November date. What that does is there's $1 million available for a jail, up to $1 million. And up to $1 million for IT to start the jail reentry program. For, this is for healthcare for the inmates. And what it would do, from what I understand, is we would have to start billing. So we're going to have to integrate new software and, and learn how to bill. We don't typically bill Medicaid, but that's what this would do. It would start that billing process. Jail reentry programs are pretty common in bigger jails, and they have people just specifically hired to do jail reentry. Unfortunately, we don't have that manpower, and so that's going to probably just fall on the rest of us to, to manage. Because jail reentry isn't just about medical care. But this medical care program would give them up to, I believe, 30 days of medications upon release. And a jail reentry program also includes making sure that they're set up with the Social Security Administration, the housing, all of those things that they need to function as a grown adult who should be responsible for their care once they leave. But it sets it up so that they are prepared to leave and we're not setting them up for failure. It does require a lot of time and effort. And part of that package would include the electronic health records, which would be very advantageous because then we would have access to healthcare records that we currently don't. We don't know when people are on medications, if they're not truthful with us, right? We just don't know. We don't have a way with, to, to look. This would give us that advantage to look and see what kind of medications they'd been on or even if they'd been refilling or taking their medications. You know, they blow a lot of smoke a lot of times, so it would really be advantageous to be part of this. And Erin Quinn is willing to help us start that process. It's an early stage, and I believe I, there's a meeting today that I'm scheduled to be at, but I'll keep following what the healthcare authority is doing. We've wanted a long time for the state to take over the medical expenses because we know, you can see in our reports, how much medical expenses are.
So is this part of the 300 million side of sign?
I believe that's what that, yes.
Okay, and it's up to $1 million per, for each side, so up to $2 million for the county?
Right.
Is, and is that June of?
Based on our jail size.
Yeah, is that June of '24 or June '25?
June of '24 and then November of '24. And then I think March of '25 is their next round. There's like three different tiers to start.
Because I know the Medicaid billing won't be starting until minimum of June '25 on the 11/15.
But they have to get you started on the program so that you can get all, everything implemented and all your health records and all the software install because that's time and it.
And so is there a grant application available already that the HCA's put out?
They were working on it and hoping to have it out by May, I believe.
Okay.
So I don't think they had the full application ready, but it was definitely something they were trying to push through since I think the first application is due like in June. But we would not even be ready in June. I mean, we, there's a lot of research we need to do on our end. We don't even know, honestly, if we're going to have the manpower to operate such a system, right? I mean, we can't continue down a path with limited employees and expect more out of them.
And so the, you know, the, the position you were talking about is kind of a case manager position. And that $1 million, is that just for the startup? And then you would have a new case manager and all these positions with, then it would fall back on the county for no continual funding? You know what I'm saying? Is we can build it, but then it's like all the unfunded mandates that come out of the state. We build it and then they walk away from the costs.
Right, and I don't know what all that looks like yet.
Okay.
I was gone most of last week to review some of the slides that they sent out. So that's my goal this week is to review some of those slides that were pushed out from Wasp, from that meeting.
And then I know this isn't, this, you're just giving it for him. With the $25,000 from the risk pool, is there a contract in place with the risk pool for that? Or just an inclination that they will pay? Where is that at?
Lauren brought over the approved contract and everything. It's in the box for you guys to sign next week if you approve of it.
And that's the, the contract from the risk pool or is that the contract for the, the company and the, to buy the stuff?
It's got the communication from the risk pool saying it's up to $25,000 that they will pay. It's their email suggesting that we get this and.
And is there?
It's the authorization to purchase.
Is there any, anything else? Any other equipment? Because I know Commissioner Christopher was talking when he was like, there's this stuff and this stuff and this stuff. Did you look into all the different types of equipment?
I know that he's looked into a bunch of different equipment. This is the one that he brought to me to get the approval from the PA's office.
And for $25,000, do we need to go to bid? Because there might be multiple companies that, that are providing for it, or did we put it out to bid?
We did not put it out to bid. This was the company, this was what the risk pool had recommended is my understanding. So I just transferred the paperwork to the PA. So.
I wasn't part of. We're not getting a side on any of the bidding, you know?
Understood, yeah.
Okay, those are my questions there.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, so I wanted to address in your cost analysis and tracking that you guys presented during your meeting on the 29th of March, that document, you had said there was a liability for KBH of $192,000. But Lori Groves and I had been working on those numbers. And here's an email that I've included in here that shows what the actual numbers are. That 192 is the charges, but the actual amount due is 85,000, which I have always been saying is in the 80s.
Because it should be the 50% according to state.
50%, but also there were, in their system, there were discounts that hadn't been written off for open bills that we had already paid. There were duplicate invoices. So Lori and I spent our time working through each of the numbers and what's what. And that way we were able to it. So I figured the best way to show you was her email of when she got back from vacation of what the number is and that it's the numbers that I had submitted for the supplemental. So just wanted to show you that. And to let you know that inmate, inmate medical costs are driven by the health of the inmate. So it is not something we can control within the jail. And so how, how they come in and the health of the inmate is.
Yeah, we're all concerned about the health of the inmates, right?
So.
So our medical budgets were cut two years in a row?
Yeah, we were, we only received 30,000 in our medical budget this year.
But I don't think we adjusted that. I think that's what came into the commissioners.
Nope, that was not the number I submitted. Here comes Jen. Oh, there goes Jen. So she had, yeah, so. Yep, here comes Jen. Or had you heard the question?
I did not.
Inmate medical and how it's only budgeted at 30,000, even though we typically spend more.
Okay, so just. Then I think, I think I did hear, I heard a response.
Hopefully this is working?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so when we build the budget, right? Departments, offices submit a budget for what they would propose. The budget that was submitted was about $200,000 over status quo, right? I had called Karen and said, hey, it was a status quo. Is there any way that you can get that down to what your budget was last year? Remember that conversation?
Yep.
And, and you said, yeah. Yeah, let me work on that. And, and you came back and that line item had been adjusted.
We just. Down to, from 50,000 down to 30. Now, looking at what the bills actually are, you know, year over year, even 50,000 wouldn't be enough.
Right.
So, so I just wanted to make that clear because the way it just came across was that we only gave you 30, but.
Okay, yeah.
But.
But we had agreed supplemental. Yeah.
It's dead. So I, that was all I just wanted to clarify that.
So the commissioners did not cut that budget is what we're saying?
We had agreed that it would be a supplemental. Or that we were.
If, if you guys kind of make operational changes to be able to stay, but at that point, there, there was no question there. I'm like.
Okay.
But there was, you know, invoices going back to '21 that, that I wasn't aware of, that are not reflected in the financials yet because they hadn't been paid yet, right? So there's those things that have been working through and you have been working with Lori and.
Come up here. There's people that want to be able to hear. Sorry.
So those invoices absolutely have been, being worked on, going back and forth between what is cities, what is county, and getting those invoices taken care of. There's a supplemental request to take care of some of those that's in the packet that is going to hearing on the 14th or so. And then in the, in the analysis, just for clarification on there, at that point in time, I did not know the details of those invoices. I just knew the total gross amount. So my analysis did in fact state gross amount on there. So that's, that was still an accurate statement on that analysis.
I'd like to point out that Karen's very scrupulous on these medical bills. We get medical bills from KBH for people that are not even ours. They've never even been in custody. They're not even in our Spelman name files, right? We get billed for people that are not ours. So it's a continual battle with KBH, not only for us, but for citizens in this city who deal with KBH's billing, right? You've, if you've watched Facebook, you've seen the nightmare. It's a long history problem. And then if they correct a bill, you'll note on here, then they give it a new bill number, right? So that makes it even more confusing. So we make a complicated process even more complicated. And thank God she goes through every single one. And we sit down together and make sure that people are getting billed properly, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and there was even more confusion of like those prior years had to get rebuilt and then show up in a new year. So I totally understand.
Right, it's completely screwed up at KBH. And they need to take the bosses there, either fire people and get people in there that can do the job, or we're going to continue with this problem. But what bothered me, the sheriff being accused of overrunning his budget for the last two years. Well, that 192,000 on medical was not accurate. Or the gross, it was accurate, but it was not on the sheriff. And I, am I unhappy about that? You're damn right.
If I may, KBH is not the enemy here. This is clearly a process issue. And it's a process issue that's been occurring for a while. We're not here to, the people need to be fired.
And not be settled yet. We've known it for a while, right?
And I've been, I've been trying to work with KBH to start the process early with the admitting process so that when the patient comes in and the. The admitting process so that when the patient comes in and the. In an admitting po- process, and I've worked in a hospital for twenty-three years. I know how the admitting process works. And so when they make the assumption, when a deputy comes in, oh, they came in with the deputy. It's a hot, it's the K S, K C S O's process that they paid the bill. That is the trigger for most of these bills. So the standoff in Murdoch, when the deputy brought the, came in with the inmate to make sure. He was saved. He wasn't even an inmate. He was a mental health patient. They billed us a hundred percent on that. When there was a deputy that was on the scene of a psychiatric case. They billed us for it. The deputy wasn't even there.
So, so again, this is.
It's a process issue.
Process issue between K V H and not only the jail, but also the sheriff's department. It seems like there needs to be processes worked on that everybody gets.
On them and, and we have that process.
So it's going to be fixed now?
We're working on it. K V H has not agreed to. Checking with who's bringing the inmate in.
Okay.
The person in.
In any way that we can. Right, in any way we can help to facilitate that discussion.
Lori and I have agreed to start having uh get togethers and work on these processes. But she has finally agreed to this. We are finally on the same page.
That's great to hear.
But we, as the sheriff said. Inmate medical expenses. Are driven by the inmate's health. We currently have one with severe heart issues. He's seeing a heart specialist on a regular basis, right? That physician is in Oregon. I don't know that we're going to get that fifty percent cut off.
We don't get a discount for him.
Right, so those are costs that we have to incur. Those are out of our control. We have to keep his heart ticking while he's in custody, right? That's our job. So will you be seeing some higher bills come through? Absolutely. Do we have control over it? Absolutely not. Do we wish the courts move faster to get him out of our facility? Absolutely. But we don't, so we're going to continue to have hospital bills.
So again, where it comes in to the realm of the county commissioners. It's, it's a county commissioner's job to say to all of our departments, bring us forward a budget that's budget neutral that you can live with it. That's, and that's what was sent out.
And we were asked to cut two hundred thousand, which we did.
We, you were asked to cut off of not the, not what was sent out. You were asked to cut off of what your proposal was, which was two hundred thousand dollars over that. And you were asked to bring it back to budget neutral like every other department was. Let's be very clear.
Every department did that?
Yes.
Every department, every department got sent the exact same request to cut to. To bring back a budget that is budget neutral, the same, you, everybody got the same email. So then, then the other statement was made that, that we, the board of county commissioners changed that. I just want to be clear that Jen and you both agree that we did not change that number down.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to, just, just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. Um, because we usually what we do when we're going through these budgets, when we start making the line item changes, we look at the previous budget, right? And the previous budget might be low, especially with medical expenses. If, and we all know that, you know, in every hospital, it can take a year to get a bill, sometimes two years. And so you could have, of course, from your perspective, cut that number back because you look at your previous year's actual expenses. And you're like, well, the previous year's expenses were low. Well, that can easily be because you never got a bill.
Right.
And so we just, our goal is just to make sure that the budget is accurate. That we have available budget and that we can continue to operate. We're not going over budget. Because we have to find that money from somewhere else if we do go over budget. And so that's. I know Lori's only been for two, on two budget cycles. But for Dan and I on all the budget cycles, it's always been, because people used to put in really big numbers. In their budgets and then they never had to worry about it. They're never going to go over budget. But as, as the, the whole system shrinks in terms of available funds. We've had to continue to cut those budgets back, so we're getting closer and closer. Which will of course always then roll into, you're going to have more supplemental budgets as people get close. But at least we're budgeting closer. Otherwise, if you can't do it that a way, you're just laying people off. Because, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to address that issue. Number one is public safety. Number one. If you don't believe me, ask the public. Number two. We keep cutting our budgets, by the way, not just this board, but prior boards. At no time over twenty years has added one deputy to our department. Not one, over twenty years. You can research it. The county has grown in population. Around twenty-three thousand, I've been told. Our call loads are up. You can see it by the numbers. We're lucky to have three deputies out on the road at one time during shift. The, the point I'm making here is we keep cutting budgets. We'll have to cut services. And that's on you folks, because I'll make damn sure it is. Thank you. We done?
We're done.
I've got a few more questions. April ninth, uh, staff provided you a list of questions um from the B O C C. Uh, can we get an update on where we're at on moving through those questions and expected on? I know there's a lot of questions, so at least like the first tranche of answers to those.
So I actually went last week um out of town so I could work quietly on that list. It's eight pages long. I don't really have the staff, extra staff and hours uh to spend a thousand hours to answer those questions. So I expect that it will take a, a couple of months to get through because I have other duties as well. Because now we've lost a front staff office member, we're now going to start incorporating all of that workload as well. I can't work twenty-four hours a day, nor can uh the rest of the administration. I can tell you that I called some jail commanders because one of your questions was about accreditation. There are seven jails in the state of Washington that are accredited. There's a hundred and seventy-two standards that go along with Wasp's accreditation. Of those a hundred and seventy-two standards, it is a case by case. You look at everything that goes through the department. It costs thousands of dollars. It takes twelve to eighteen months. Not including the cost of overtime and full-time staff. At least one member full-time with overtime through that twelve to eighteen month period. And that's the only function they do, along with a mentor that comes in and helps. That's also not including costs that would have to be incurred for any improvements to the facility. As well as software uh upgrades. So you're looking possibly at tens of thousands of dollars. Clearly, we don't have a budget for that. So accreditation is probably not an option. Uh, L M A C, where they was pick, could come in and review um all of our policies, procedures. And go through the jail. That is the tune of cost of two thousand dollars plus fifty plus hours. Uh, at the seventy-five dollars an hour rate for a Waspic member to come through and do that. I don't have two thousand dollars, nor do I have that uh seventy-five dollars an hour for fifty plus hours. Because I have training that I have to get through for all the deputies. Um, and that budget, of course, we know is minute. And uh, I think I've already burned through that and I still have uh eight months to go, so. Training, our twenty-four hours is going to be really uh interesting. Uh, to get through that, not only for the jail staff, but for the patrol staff. Um, I did talk to a commander from the city of Kent who has done the um accreditation and. Really, it's just not something that we can. Effectively do right now. I mean, would we like to?
Well, that's, I mean. The, the questions were not posed in a way that i- it's an attack.
Well, it all feels like an attack.
The questions are posed so that we can make rational, logical decisions together.
Right.
As a county. And, and I understand that those, there's a lot of questions and I understand it's going to take a, a while and, and so that's why I.
I currently have five pages written uh handwritten that I did while I was out of town. It's going to take me several more months to get all of the data that you are requesting. There is healthcare data, there, I'd be. The number, it kind of irks me because we sit here every month. Um, and we, and I've been coming here since, I don't know, twenty nineteen. And none of those questions have been posed during all of that time from anybody on the board. Not from this board or the current board. So now suddenly I have eight pages, fine print, my, my ad. Uh, of questions to try to get through. Like I said, I don't have the staffing just to sit and do that, right? I'm now entering citations for deputies into Spelman because somebody's got to do it and we don't have the staff to do it, right? You guys keep asking more and more and more out of us, but we're not getting, we don't have the staff. We don't have this ability to, to do, jump through all your little hoops that you continue to want us to. I don't understand. Have you? Have you guys come over and, and sat during a shift yet at the jail? Because I think you should. Next Monday is a docket day. Maybe you can come see what they're, these guys are doing.
Would it, would it help? I, I know I gave it to staff, but I don't know if it came over. But in terms of uh priority list on those questions, so that you know which ones are more important.
That would be very beneficial.
Okay.
And I also like to point out on that financial uh statement too, to the public. Uh, there was a whole long list. I really hadn't studied it until I had some time away. Uh, it was talking about all the capital improvements. I'd like to make mention that those capital improvements. All those dollars do not come out of our budget. In fact, some of them, we didn't, I didn't even, wasn't aware of some of those, right? They don't usually come to us and say, what do you want fixed, right? They come in and say uh right before uh work is to be done. If it's like an appliance like the washing machine, we had some conversation, right? But there's minimal conversation uh between who's making the decisions for capital improvements. And our, and our office staff, right?
So you're not talking with Public Works on the capital improvement plan for the jail?
I didn't have any idea on some of that.
We'll have to look into that as well.
You know, I.
Were, were we talking about Jeff coming through the jail?
This is the, the capital improvement plan, I believe is what you're talking about.
Right, not financial. So, but, but the public needs to understand though, that those dollar amounts are not reflected as part of our budget, right?
Correct.
So, because I think that was kind of confusing. If you look at it. It looks like that's part of our jail budget. It, it really is not. So, do we need capital improvements? Of course, we always need capital improvements. The new jail roof, what a blessing, right? We don't have water leaking through the dang ceiling now and through the light system and through the camera system, right? Those are things that we need. Those are things that uh have to be maintained. Do we know the jail facility is old? Absolutely. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. Um, and I've gone through some of that list on improvements, because that was part of the questions. And I believe Jeff came through and uh did a walkthrough when I was gone. Um, so I don't know what kind of things I, they identified.
Could Jeff have been talking with Lauren for the capital improvement plan since? I know you're not in charge of the, the jail, but I'm trying to figure out how things get on the ca- the county capital improvement plan if they haven't had discussions with, with the jail. That it just doesn't make sense.
Don't ask me, I don't know. In all the years while I was jail chief, they didn't come into me and ask me what I thought needed to be done next in the jail. They replaced a sliding, one of our sliding doors. Uh, and mind you, those are the tune of about thirty thousand to be replaced, those nice heavy uh green sliding doors. They replaced one, which we were kind of confused why they replaced that one, because it was actually one that was functioning pretty well. But the one that really needed replaced, but sometimes there's just not that communication. Um, it's unfortunate, it's just the way it is, and we just continue to move on, right? I mean, what do we do?
We can check with Lauren when he gets back, um, but let's face it, and two of you know this, it's political. You can deny it until hell freezes. It is political and you know it. You gotta get rid of the sheriff, but you can't do that without a recall. And the recall's been bounced around, by the way, not on me. By a couple of people there. But the idea that, well, if we take the jail over or we contract it, we can get rid of Lauren Colt. Because a group that we associate with don't like Lauren Colt. And then we can black the eye of the sheriff because we had to take the jail away from him.
Well, I wish you could take back all the events that happened so I didn't have to work on this, Bob.
Yeah.
What I wish.
Well, okay, then the con, the investigations you want me to investigate?
And don't.
Anderson and the prosecutor? You want me to close those out?
You can spin it, Bob, all you wanted is we're going to take.
And I got your statement, girl.
Track from anything, Bob.
No. No, we know where it's at. You might want to talk to her about it.
Sheriff. I'm sorry that you feel this way, that you think that it is political against you.
No, it is.
Sheriff, the only person who's made it political, who goes to the, the newspaper about it, is you talking about it being political. This is the very, very last thing that this board wants to deal with. We have twenty-three different departments. We have all, all the other things that we deal with every day. This is the last thing that we want to be dealing with.
Well, the thing I do as a sheriff, an elected sheriff, and I, I don't work for you two or the third one. I don't work for the governor. I don't work for the attorney general. But the thing I'm pointing out here is transparency to the public. You guys need to do that. What really is going on. And that may happen anyway. Well, I assume that you got more questions?
I do.
Fortunately.
I do. To get back to it, uh, there's no top use talking about politics and making things personal. Because we have, we have problems. And it's very obvious that some of those problems are the finances and we're trying to fix the finances. I was in your office in February, uh, Karen, and we were looking at the budget. And we were going through, and I know when, at that time, you weren't done with it yet. And so I was hoping to have an update on what you think on that patrol side. What is that actual increase going to be? And we need to start planning for that now. We need to either find the dollars available or we have to make operational changes in order to stay within the budget. These were the conversations we wanted to have at the beginning of the year. These are the conversations we had at the end of last year. When you became civil deputy, these were the same conversations we were having so that we can stay within budget. And so I, that's what I'm looking for is, is what's your internal valuation on, on those dollars?
I'm readjusting the wages with the retirement of one of our sergeants.
Okay.
Today's his last day. I've got to reallocate some of the salaries. So. I will have a new number to Jen hopefully next week.
Okay, but are we, are we still looking around two hundred plus thousand dollars uh over budget for, for what we were expecting from? The budget neutral, what was designed?
You're looking at all the numbers. I have to. Look at, I have to get the number from uh supplemental that's approved.
Right, but usually that, that retirement, as Jen was, Jen was telling us this morning, that usually comes out of something separate. I know there's going to be a supplemental, so I'm trying to see, you know. We, we don't usually look at retirements because people don't have to tell us when they're going to retire, so it's not something we build into the budget. I'm talking about just the, the budgeted amount that was put forward originally versus when we talked in February, what that new number is. Because we have to start making the hard choices on where those dollars come from.
Right now, we're running, except for the inmate medical, we're running about seventy-one percent of our budget. Instead of seventy-five, so.
Sorry, seventy-one versus seventy-five percent?
Remaining.
Oh, remaining. Got it. Thank you.
And I'm working my career off trying to get revenue in, going through all of the. Civil processes, making sure people are paying, going through everywhere I can to find those extra dollars. So those are my two focuses.
And Sheriff, we're, we're not picking on you? This is not an issue where we're picking on your budget. These are the same conversations we're having with the nine-one-one system?
You are, yeah, no doubt in my mind. But I have people out there that you know and I know, come back with comments of what you've set off record, or you have, Lori. So. You know, you can say it's not political. If it wasn't political, why didn't you folks sit down with us before you dropped the bombshell on March twenty-ninth? If it wasn't political, why didn't you folks sit down with us before you dropped the bombshell on March twenty-ninth? About contracting by April twelfth for moving the inmates over? I didn't, I didn't hear from you. Didn't get that word, nor did the cities. Actually, not even the judge. Talked to him here about it on March twenty-ninth. So, I felt that we were not being honest. That it was out to uh pick the sheriff and get rid of Colt. But I got news. If you do shut the jail down, or if you do contract the jail, what, in other words, uh, we, and I wanna mention. The employees in that jail are professional outstanding and should not be going through this nonsense of stress on them. But if you say you close it down, whatever you do with it, and you get rid of uh Colt. Which some of your supporters would like to see, I will make him my chief criminal deputy. And I'll give you four one in right now. By statute, I can do that. And if that's not, then there'll be a lawsuit coming.
Sheriff, again, this is not about individuals, this is not about the people, this is about the situation at hand.
All right.
Yep.
Will you send me that priority list, please?
I will send it to you. Thank you very much. Um, and I will have staff send it to you. Cause I, I, I gave it to staff and I, and I was under the assumption that it was gonna get sent to you.
Yeah, I just had a, I just had the eight-page list, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no miscellaneous reports or comments to you.
Um, yeah. Just trying to make a list.
Oh, yes. Back up to the pay estimate. Where did we miss those?
Yeah, I'll get to it. I'm just looking to see what, all right. Madam Chair, we have the approval of pay estimate, uh, number one and final to the Clickatatt County Courthouse Election Security Room Floor Covering. For three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-five cents, plus sales tax of two thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. For a total of three thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. My motion is to approve.
And I will step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for pay estimates.
All right. Madam Chair, we have the approval of pay estimate, number one, for the Superior Court Ceiling Demolition and Rebuild. For eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, sales tax in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one dollars. For a grand total of eight thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Uh, my motion is to approve.
I will step down in second. All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And do you want to, did you have any uh miscellaneous reports or comments?
Yeah, I've had a lot of meetings, I'm trying to.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to make you aware, I had a meeting with the Conservation Fund yesterday. And they have their own, it's kind of silo of an economic development group. Um, and so where, where they operate, they create these, I guess, economic development zones. Where they've invested and brought groups together um to build employee housing. And they, they've tried to focus on the natural resources sectors. And so, um, it was a really good meeting about, um, I got them onto our capital improvement plan. Um, and in the big project, and they wanna work primarily on the west side of the county where their, um, their thirty-five thousand acres is. And so, the, the big one I could think of that, you know, and they know, they, the Conservation Fund has access to a lot of the philanthropic individuals, the very high net worth individuals. And the, the main one that I kinda pushed them towards was the nursing facility on the west side that we need dollars, that that might be somewhere that they can push. Um, I just wanna make you available of it, and hopefully they'll reach out and set up a meeting with, with you and Commissioner Christopher um, in the future, but if you had any, any other thoughts on-
Who's on that? Board, Conservation Fund?
The Conservation Fund is the, the ones that created the, um, they were in the SDS sale. So they bought a third of SDS properties, and they're trying to um lightly log it and roll it over into conservation organizations like the Forest Service or Columbia Land Trust and, and sell those properties over. They've got like a ten-year horizon thereabouts. But they also get involved in the economic development, and in a lot of areas where they work. You know, they write the grants, they do a lot of things, because the counties are very rural, and they don't have an economic development department. And I said, whoa. We have three people in our economic development department, that might not be where you can best be of beneficial use. Um, you know, and so I gave them uh contact for Richard to hopefully get in contact with, but um I thought it was really interesting that, you know, they're actually looking at the economic development side as well as the conservation side.
Yeah, I'm really thankful that they're willing to commit to the communities. It's a good deal. I did attend a general consulate meeting um by the invitation of the city of Goldendale at Maryhill Museum last week. And it was really interesting, it was um consulate representatives from all over the world. So Finland, uh, Germany, Kazakhstan, I, is how you pronounce it maybe. Um, and it was about green energy. And so it was a very interesting meeting. Um, I always assume, because America's so young, that somehow always Europe is ahead of us on everything. And talking to Germany specifically, I found out that we're kind of in the same boat. Everything was more of a worldwide program of, we've gotta get into green energy. So everybody has a lot of the same questions. We have a lot of the same struggles we have with uh taxing and financing and agreements. I heard a lot of that same from other countries as well. And uh, one of the ones that we did talk about was the recycling of the blades and things when they repower, so. That was, that was an interesting meeting, and I got cards, so I can still reach out and-
How many, how many countries can?
I think seven, even Nepal was there.
Really?
Nepal, places, yeah. But really neat to meet them, and they have interesting positions that they hold.
Most of my other meetings have all been bridge, and you've heard about that plenty. We've got another time. If there's anything else, I'll bring it up this afternoon, missing these comments.
Yeah, I have nothing else.
Okay. Madam Chair, uh, I would make a motion to recess for the lunch hour, noting we will be back at one P M.
Thank you, and I'll second. Stepping on in second. Lost where I was.
You've come a, a very long way.
Uh, good afternoon, welcome back to the Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, April thirtieth. And we're going to start with a short flat with our building department, Rebecca.
Thank you. So, this is a short flat for, it's a flat alteration of a short flat. The applicants are Dean Enterprises LLC. Flat alteration number SPL two zero two three dash zero one. Alt is a proposal for the alteration flats one and two of short flat ninety-five dash zero five. The parcels are zero three one zero zero two five zero 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 two zero zero. And zero three one zero zero two five zero 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 one zero zero. The proposed flat alteration is located within the portion of section two, township three, range Japan, Willamette, Meridian. Clicktatt County, Washington, in the Houston vicinity. The administrative view of this short flat alteration has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it is in the public's interest to approve this flat alteration, the motion needs to be made granting final approval. Of SPL two zero two three dash zero one alt.
Can you explain the hash marks?
The hash marks are, so part of the alteration is the um, the previous easement. That is no longer there. That was part of the alteration that was done.
So that was, that was removing it, cause I've never seen that type of a signal. But I can't understand.
Yeah. So they shifted the um access over a little bit and made it um to where it was easier to work with the parcel. And they um moved the boundary line a little bit to where this shed stayed with lot two, instead of being on lot one.
Right, right. I have no issues.
I have none.
It was just, I was like, I've never seen Pennsyl or anybo- or Pioneer use those hash marks. Uh, Madam Chair, we have before us short flat uh alteration SPL twenty twenty-three dash zero one, the applicant being LJ Dean Enterprises. My motion is to approve.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Greg coming in? We've got it one thirty, is he coming in person?
I believe so.
So do we wanna move forward with Jay if Greg's not here yet?
Yeah. Since you're here early, that's great. Sure, come on up. That's what happens when you come early, that's awesome. Oh, is, is it just that one page? Sorry. So next we'll move forward with Madam's Resources, Jay McLaughlin for an update.
Yeah, thank you for working me into the, the schedule today. And a couple of, a couple of things to talk about. One, just a quick update on where we are with our work. Um, Mount Adams Resource Stewards, this year celebrating our twentieth year and uh within the next, I know, I know, and within the next three or four weeks, we'll, we'll be fully staffed up for our field season with, I believe it'll be twenty-seven staff members this year. Um, a dozen folks that work on our forestry and fuels crew. And then folks that are working closely with Convo Lake National Wildlife Refuge, and I've got a couple of support staff over helping set up timber sales and stewardship sales for the Gifford Pincho National Forest. And then essentially our overhead team, so we're, we're busy and have never been busier. Uh, there've been some, some healthy investments coming into the area, in particular around the community wildfire defense uh work, and, and that's keeping our crews really busy and looks to, looks like it will continue to keep them busy for the next at least five years. Um, on the community forest side of things, which is a big part of the reason why I'm here today. The Mount Adams Community Forest completed our last acquisition, which was, I believe, our sixth last September. Uh, adding eight hundred acres that we purchased from Warehouser along the BZ Glenwood Highway, and so we've been busy developing the management plan for that property and anticipating our first timber sales out there this July. Markets go as planned and contractors are available, but we're in the process of setting that up and getting board review and community input. Uh, we had a community meeting in Glenwood in February and um had some good feedback relative to interests around public access, recreation, signage, involving the, the young people at the school, things along those lines. And so, uh continues to be a, a um we feel a widely supported project that's doing some great things in terms of opening these lands back up to the public for things that they used to enjoy these lands for, from hunting, hiking, horseback riding, et cetera. While also keeping those lands on the property tax rolls, um part of the CRMPs, et cetera, so really maintaining those, those traditional land-based livelihoods. Today, I was hoping to, to uh secure your support for an application that we're currently working on for the twenty twenty-four round of Community Forest Program Grants that the state's Recreation and Conservation Office currently has open. And will be seeking funding for an eight hundred and sixty-one acre addition that's in the map that I shared with you by email. Um, this acreage is immediately adjacent to our ownership, that's basically be- between Glenwood and the truck shop down towards the Clickatatt River. Uh, the north boundary would be the track D boundary. And it's kinda that eastern edge of, of what's been managed as part of the historic Clickatatt Tree Farm. About three hundred and thirty acres are in thirty-year or younger plantation. Uh, the rest of it is naturally regenerated forest that ranges from kinda really low site pine oak woodland down along the highway to a former northern spot of the Owl Circle, that's on some really steep ground up on the hillside, but not really valuable stuff in that it's heavy with dwarf mistletoe and operationally really challenged, challenged to uh, to extract. So, so um, it's a property that we're excited about in terms of just continuing to build on what we own. Um, the area is enjoyed by people for dispersed recreational purposes, largely hunting, turkey hunting, deer hunting in the fall, things like that. Um, but would love to, to have the support of the commissioners as part of the Community Forest Program. Were directed to notify local jurisdictions that were applying to the program. For the first time this year, we're looking at potentially expanding on funding options, and we are now eligible to apply to the habitat category that the WWRP, which is what Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program funds. And, and that, from what I'm learning, is a little bit more of a rigorous process of conferral. Um, and, and maybe it doesn't have to be, but, and you, and you all know that process better than I from your work with groups like Columbia Land Trust. Um, there are some, some acres on this property that probably fit a little bit better in that habitat category, they're just not really productive forest land. And um, so, so we're looking at whether we can pull that application together quickly enough to pursue a portion of funds for this property acquisition from that category as well. I'll pause, and if you have any questions, or if I'm not making any sense, I'm happy to clarify.
What? If I may. What local match are you bringing to the table on this acquisition?
What local match? Uh, that's a great question, Jake, and it, and it's um to be determined. It, in historically, we've utilized this program once, you could say twice, it was kinda before the program was formalized before. And last time we utilized it, we accessed the Forest Services Community Forest Program for matching funds. The acquisition that we just completed in September, which was not funded. Actually, it wa- it was, it was the one that was also funded from this. We also borrowed a quarter of a million dollars. And are in the process of the, the timber harvest that we're anticipating this summer will, will reduce that debt or retire that debt. So, that's, that is one beauty of being able to utilize programs like this to acquire timber value. And, and then actually match it with revenues from the property.
I have no questions.
Uh, are you now the largest non-school uh business in the Glenwood Valley?
We kind of all, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you ever think twenty years ago you'd be the-
Sure, I would've said, would've wanted to be, right, right, yeah.
So twenty-seven staff?
Twenty-seven staff, and, and they-
Did you go up in the last year? Did you grow quite a bit?
We've been there for a couple of years, I mean, this year might be. Uh, we had a temporary surge where we, I think, almost bumped up to thirty-two falls ago. Uh, but we've kinda been in that twenty-three to twenty-five for the last couple of years, and that was a big pickup from the five or six years, from five or six years ago. So, definitely exponential growth over the last six or seven years.
Yeah, it's amazing to think that it, the stewardship economy is the, the largest, you know, non-
Public, yeah. Yeah, and, and, and it's, it's pretty amazing to us in terms of the demand for the workforce that we've been building uh outside of the area, in addition to all the projects that we have locally. So I've got a six-person module over on the Boise National Forest for two weeks right now, prepping prescribed burn units there. And um, uh, let's see, a month ago I had a module up on the Okanagan-Wanatchee outside of Lake Shemane. And um, uh, let's see, a month ago, I had a module up on the Okanagan Wenatchee outside of Lake Shum Lane. Down on the Hila National Forest in New Mexico, and I had a group in Colorado at the beginning of the year, so. So during those times of the year when it's wet and dark or snowbound here, we can find work for them in other places and are able to build these jobs out to pretty close to year-round decent wage positions, so keep doing that.
So on this parcel, what um what do you have for enhancement? I mean, going for habitat, is that going for the habitat, is that going to change any of your operational complexities with regards to what that'll allow for in those areas?
We've been, we've tried to be very careful about that and consulted with some of the industrial forest managers that have that have managed that property through the years. And this is the suggestion to us was there are some of these acres up on that really steep hillside where it would just doesn't make a ton of sense in terms of a harvest. Uh, we we would only engage those funds if we were able to still actively manage the property for for multiple benefits. You start getting down into that. The other area that we were considering is that more oak pine woodland area. There's a western gray story, western gray squirrel story, you could probably tell there, but if it it would allow for thinning followed up by prescribed fire, then it could make sense from our perspective. Um, we might just limit it to some of that really steep area that's that's just not economically viable to manage actively for forestry.
And it's outside Track D?
And it's outside Track D.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I have no issues with it.
No.
Okay.
I guess um I could, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to have staff staff draw up a letter of support for the um, Community Forest application. And if wildlife application, if you move forward for the WWRP program, for Mount Adams Resource stewards for the chair's signature.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Driving all the way up here.
Good to see you. Let's see the next time.
We still have a little bit of time. Sure. Heather, would you like to take up a little bit of time before Greg gets here?
We're all just stalling for Greg.
Well, he's on time.
Well, thanks for squeezing me in this afternoon. Um, what I've brought over for your um motion and approval is a technical adjustment to the precinct changes that we adopted last week. There's a tiny little piece in North Goldendale around the Mormon Church that is not incorporated into the city of Goldendale, but is wholly surrounded by Incorporated City of Goldendale, and it was excluded, as it should be, from the legal description of Precinct one oh four. But it never got included in any legal description, so we inadvertently didn't precinct that small group. So we've now added them to uh Precinct twenty-one. So you have a modified map and legal description for Precinct twenty-one.
That's a weird one, wasn't it?
Catching all the little things.
Yep.
Any questions?
I do not.
Again, bang up job, uh getting this through. This is amazing. Uh, Madam Chair, we have before us a uh resolution amending the legal description and maps of Precinct twenty-one in Clickatatt County. Um, my motion is to approve.
And I'll step down in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Last one?
Oh.
Hopefully.
We're running out of time, right? Or we ran out of time?
Ye- ye- yes, but this is just a technical glitch, so. But we will try to stay on top of things as as we precincts evolve or change in annexations that like we haven't. Part of what I had to amend on last week's and why you were it got pulled from the consent agenda was because there were annexations from two thousand and twelve, as far back as two thousand and twelve that hadn't been officially adopted. So we've.
That move precincts.
Yeah, that, yeah, in White Salmon, they had annexed various areas, and it never got it got adopted from a practical standpoint, but it never officially got adopted by the legislative body to change those legals and.
Or adjust the precincts. Everything else was done.
Yeah, so.
Um, I didn't even know you handed.
Yeah, so we're we're making sure to clean up the record, and we've added it to our process that we have to complete um that and get any changes to precincts, the legals and the maps actually formally adopted by by you guys. So going forward, anytime we make a change, you'll you'll see a resolution with that change attached.
I.
Yeah, I was waiting. I said I already. I was waiting. Motion passes.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just signed it, so we'll save it for Dan's signature. I'll just send it back to you.
He's absolutely.
Okay.
We tabled the minute, so we can't sign these, so don't.
Okay, so don't.
That one doesn't need it.
Okay.
This one's coming up next. We'll just set these up.
Okay. I sign those, you'll have to sign.
Do I have to sign?
Yeah, I think. Big packet over here. I can pass that.
Yep.
Yeah, trade, yep. Yeah, I'm starving. I'm starving. Hello, you can come on up front.
Okay.
We did every, no second.
Well, it's a one-thirty thing, so I didn't think.
You're on time. We were just went kind of quick today, so.
It's a it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
You can give us an update if you want.
Sure.
At one thirty. The public hearing at one thirty here, at one thirty.
For the treasures.
For the treasures office for the.
Surplus of the sales.
Yeah.
Is there is there somebody else looking?
Looking for something else.
Anyway, no, we're just collecting taxes. That's what we're doing today. It's pretty boring. No, I'm just kidding.
How's that? Yeah, it's right down.
Today's day.
Is it busy, busy?
Busy, busy.
I've got stuff in my purse.
You better come over.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want that.
No, thank you.
Yes, you need to come to the office.
I'm locking my door after this so I can get that done. Jake and I were just, no lunch. I'm starving. So that.
So that's where that's what we're doing.
Priority was food, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I'll get that up. Yeah, I bet your office is very busy. I saw a lot of people this morning.
We are busy, yes. We have a lot of people using the online payment too, so that's good.
I do like that. I thought about getting on and doing that.
And the online doesn't charge the three percent now if you use a check?
Um, no, it's a dollar fifty.
Just a straight dollar fifty.
Which I'll bring, I'm gonna come to you about that in the budget session.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should cover it, but that's just my own thoughts.
Interesting.
Should be like DOL. You know, the DOL covers that. But anyway, we it's a whole nother thing, but we are getting a lot of folks using the it's because it's two point five percent, I think, for the credit card, three ninety-five for the debit card. And a dollar fifty.
What are we, the next moves in county government for being able to pay online? Where are we moving?
We're working on it. I mean, it it's a messy, that's a whole we don't have enough time to go into that before because it's not quite as it but we are, yes, we're having conversations about the goods and the bads of it.
At least I didn't bring my little cheat sheet in, so I just read this statement on the public hearing. For Greg. Yeah, okay. Okay. One minute. No, I don't think I need it. This is good enough here. It does, does it have a print with it? No. Yeah, I can just read this statement. Thank you. I just want to make sure it was all there.
Um, no, it's not horrible. It's just not really very submarine. Like it's, you want it to be like seventy-five.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice? Yes.
Somebody came um to pay their taxes from Yakima. They said there was snowing and raining on their way over here, but that was this morning earlier. Yeah. Tomorrow's May first. Get some better weather coming. Oh, probably. Keeps us honest. Keeps you gardeners from getting your garden.
Yeah, yes.
One other update I have, I got an email from David Lindley. Um, the Yakima Nation has first rider offer on the Pacific Core property from the old dam down.
Yes.
Uh, but they're now thinking of um uh being the conservation owner around the cabins from the dam from the dam up.
Oh.
And uh he wants to meet with me on
Okay.
in May, and I didn't know how you felt about them moving further upstream.
Who has it now looping?
No, it's it's owned by Pacific Core currently. So this is the the part, the the parcel from where the dam was to you know, around the cabins.
Yeah, around the cabins, but would go upstream. How far north would it go?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
But just around the cabins.
Mm-hmm, all that property.
And I I didn't know how Pacific Core was ever going to divide that if they, you know, we always lived with halfway between you and me is the boundary with those neighbors down there. I didn't know what they did to delineate it. Did they leave strips now that are between parcels?
So there'll be each of the cabins, the idea is each of the cabins will have their spot underneath them and then potentially for their well and septic or whatever.
And that's it.
And then and then there'll be a common area. And so the question is, is who's going to own all the common area?
Right.
And that's the big, big question.
Right. Well, if it connects with their other property downstream, I can't imagine.
Yeah, I I haven't talked to any of the cabin owners and how they feel about it, but I just figured I'd bring it up.
Yeah, let me, tell me what you find out from David.
Okay.
And then.
Bring it back up.
I don't, I can't come up with a negative right off the bat.
Okay.
I suppose they do covenants and stuff about how they keep the property. I mean, like, they won't take all the timber or.
I have no idea.
Yeah, just let me know.
Okay. All right, just wanted to let you know.
Kind of makes sense if they're from the cabins down. It's funny that they're only the, I think the cabin owners always assumed that the property, all the propagate lines.
Going to go to them.
To them, they have big yards or big parcels, but instead they're just getting.
I don't.
Really.
Huh, I don't know. Just coming into the loop, I know we still um, we still have to figure out with legal and planning how we can create the parcels, because we used to have a planned unit development ordinance that would have worked well with, you know, figuring it out, because it's all historically been there. We thought, you know, this goes all the way back to two thousand and seven, when we were having discussions about, well, how do we create those lots and for each of those cabins and everything else?
Well, and those wells, will they Pacific Core divest to the well back to the new owner then or whatever? Because we had to sign off on that well. We drilled the well.
When you had to give it to them, yes. Yeah, and not everybody did. There's so many different works through there.
Yeah. Um, the faller that used to come there and incredible is coming by to visit with us next week. He's on our calendar.
The young, the young guy? Well, he's not young.
No, he's not young.
Because it used to be Marshall.
Marshall's coming over.
Marshall's coming over?
Yeah, with his grandson.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
He's the best timber faller I ever met.
Oh, my gosh, right between all those cabins, he had just laid those big trees down. And during the ninety-six flood, we lived really close to the resort there, and we had all that timber around us. We spent the night underneath the stairwell, because that timber was just with the wind down by Viva's house and stuff. It was just clear over the road. The tops were bending. You could hear them cracking and popping and pitch black outside. It was scary. And then it was interesting, one went across the road, I have one minute, went across the road and uh took out the guardrail right by Viva's house. And that's no man's land because it's come across the bridge, Skamania County, go another line, you're Clickatatt County. So Skamania County came and cut it, then Clickatatt County came and cut it, then the PUD came and cut it. It's like everybody hacked up this big tree.
I remember that. A long time ago.
It was a long time ago. Have a few seconds. Okay, my clock doesn't say okay. Okay, uh, we're going to open a public hearing for Greg Gallagher, treasurer, to declare certain property in Clickatatt County as surplus and setting a date for the disposal through a public online bid auction. Mr. Gallagher.
Um, so we have uh five items that are on the list for pieces of heavy equipment and a surplus of soil from the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport. I'm just, since there are so few of them, and I'm I'm just going to kind of go through. We have a nineteen ninety-nine cat grater that is located in White Salmon at the shop that has a seized-up motor, a two thousand and sixteen brose, I think, broom, um that is at the Golden Dale Shop that has a bad motor. You have the twenty-ten Volvo grater um that is at the Golden Dale Shop that does sound like it runs and moves, and we have the twenty-twelve Volvo grater at the Lyle Shop that runs and has a bad transmission. We will be selling those items on the public surplus online internet auction. Um, and then the other item that we have is the twenty-four thousand yards of surplus soil at the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport, um which we will be having a ten-dollar minimum bid per yard, ten-dollar per yard minimum bid. And we will not do that online. We will have um uh sealed bids sent to the treasurer's office by May twenty-fourth.
Great. You have questions?
Did we, are we setting minimum braid, minimum bids on any of the others?
No.
Okay.
And how do they find the auction?
Um, it's public surplus dot. Um, it's public surplus dot. I don't remember. I can't remember which one it is. It's uh, you just go to the treasurer's website. We should have a link on there.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, well, that we've, this is how we've started selling our surplus stuff since probably twenty-nineteen-ish, maybe twenty-twenty, right around the surp- Actually, it's probably twenty-twenty when we had the, things were closed down and we started using this and um, it's worked out very well. Um, we've used it for vehicles and done better than we had done in the past. Um, I kinda browse it myself occasionally. There's a lot of heavy equipment out there in various stages, so um, they do some marketing, so once we get the things put out there, they have people that they'll send it to, whether that, you know, helps or not, but at least it's out there, so um. So, yeah, so that's what we're gonna do. We've had good luck with it in the past, haven't sold any heavy equipment, so we'll give it a shot and see where we're going in.
That'll be interesting. And what was the date again?
The sale is gonna be online, May twenty-first to May twenty-fourth.
Okay.
We'll advertise in the paper. I think next week or the week after, I can't remember.
Okay.
Yep.
So I guess we open for public comment. Uh, anybody in the room would like to make a comment? Would have to come forward. Yeah, it's our routine.
Only a three day sale. Why is that so short?
Cause usually most people have sales like this a little longer.
Um, we ju- that's what we've done in the past. I mean, it's four, it, I think it's four days by the time it opens or government, three, whatever the count is. Um, that's just what we've always done. The auctions, most of them, um, the folks, the, the auction all happens on the very last day in the last minutes, because that's when everybody is bidding or doing their thing, unless they go in and put, the system allows you to go in and put a, um, put a uh, bid in and that will oversee the other, but that's just how we, we haven't had them.
Cause I've been on auction sites and at least they were open for a week on public side, give everybody a chance. I didn't know if there was room for expanding out a couple extra days. Three days is really quick.
The choice is yours. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, we'll take it under advisement, I guess. I mean, I, I've not done a public hearing for the, usually the board, uh, uh, Lee was doing them, so we're doing them now, so, I mean, well, I appreciate the comment. I don't know where we could go from here. I, we've already got a resolution already set for those days. Um, but I think that in the past, we've had them at different lengths. Um, our public foreclosure auctions are only, I think, three days as well. Okay, but.
Okay.
All right.
We did.
Yep.
Thank you. And anyone online? Comment or question? Doesn't look like it today. Pretty quiet day. So, so.
Our questions.
Do you have questions? Sorry. Okay, where am I? I don't have my cheat sheet.
I know.
Yeah.
Uh, close, close public comment.
So we're gonna. Close public comment and open it for commissioners.
So just because the auction is for three days where you can actually bid, will it be available online prior to that?
Will be, that was actually the comment I was gonna, I was trying to collect my thoughts and figure that out. So the, the um, the, we're working, I mean, right now, today, uh, we, we're doing the taxes and everything, but our hope is, is probably by the first of next week or the middle of the following that we would have the auction actually up and out there for people to view. So it would be up well before the twenty-first. Um, so that, yes, that is a true statement. It would be on the auction site for more time. The bidding part would only be open for the four days or three days or however, however you count that, opens on the twenty-first and closes on the twenty-fourth.
That's, that's the direction I was hoping to hear.
So that is what we have done in the past. And so it does seem like the auction's only that little narrow window, but it's, it, you can view them for the whole time.
And then, uh, why did we have a ten dollar minimum bid on the soil? Was that due to looking at the values?
That's what was provided from the airport uh, group that, that was there. So that was what they had suggested. Um, we, we've never put a minimum bid on many things that we sell for surplus, because our goal is to get rid of the items. So, um, that's why we don't do that, but that's what they were.
Well, that, that would make sense in a, in a situation, you know, with the airport that, that they have to get value for it or whatever's available. There's, it could be used on the airport and stockpiled for a while, but if you can get this much out of it, at least then it's a, a good enough use that you can.
Yeah, so that's what we said. And, and there will be an agreement that the um, that will, the winning bidder will have to, will have to get to an agreement and will have to have also a bond um, from them. Similar to if another contractor was on site removing the soil, because they have to remove the soil.
Right.
So we will have to get to a con- it's very similar. I'm looking at it, the building. I mean, that's if I compare things.
How about a preview day? Um, are we having a preview day for?
We haven't. No, we weren't having a preview on any of this stuff. We have, I mean, we haven't traditionally had that. We have pretty detailed things of what is working and what isn't. I mean, I kinda gave a summary of what was happening, but there is, and we don't have, we ha- we don't currently have that scheduled in there.
Well, I just, I think about value, you know, if you get to see something, your odds of bidding on it go fog, go up. And so maybe is there any way we could have a preview the day before bidding starts for two or three hours in the afternoon?
Uh, are we talking about the soil or the other items? Because the challenge is gonna be there, not in one location. And it really becomes a staffing cha- I mean, like trying to be in all of those places. Um.
I guess we do have Public Works that's in all those places, so if maybe we could put out there.
Public Works does not work for me.
I know they don't work for you, but that, but they do work for us. So if, if there's individuals who want a preview, then maybe that's something that they can work out with Public Works.
Okay, I, I can talk to them about that.
Okay, that would be great.
If somebody asks. Okay, so no more testimony or questions from commissioners?
Need to open it back up for public testimony one more time.
So we will open back up for pa- public testimony one more time. Anybody online this time? So hearing none, we will close public testimony.
Great. Madam Chair, hearing from uh, the public and receiving responses, uh, I would uh, make a motion to authorize uh, the resolution pursuant to R C W thirty-six, thirty-four, zero, three, zero uh, for the treasurer to conduct the uh, auction uh, beginning May twenty-first, ending May twenty-fourth, um, as presented.
And I will step down in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you. Sorry, I'm just writing some dates down, looking.
I know, uh, Jeff will be really happy to.
No, I, yeah, I think, yeah, we're trying to get this, that's, yeah, get this thing. Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's great.
Okay.
Any more reports or comments?
Yeah, uh, we had on the consent agenda last week, the um, agreement on the landfill gas dollars. And I wanted to have at least a, a transparent conversation about where I was at, because we've never talked about it with my previous conversations with uh, Dan Gunkel. And then I know you've, I understand you've had a conversation and where that goes. So, we in, we went into those negotiations two years ago, two and a half years ago on landfill gas dollars. Uh, we were looking for dollars for one project and um, the P U D had five projects. And there was a lot of conversation among the boards on, wow, they're bringing forward a lot of projects. And um, so at the time, the was the project from twenty-eighteen, which was a part of a much larger project and down at the airport well. The two hundred thousand dollars was set aside to bring that airport well online, and it was supposed to be used for uh, match, local match on a two to three million dollar overall project. And they were going to take the lines up to North Dalzport. Um, they were go- we were going to hook up the, their port well and bring everything up. And it was, it was a massive, massive project. Um, I wish it would have been done back then, because it's, you know, three times the cost today as it is back in twenty-eighteen. And so when I went into the, you know, in, at that time, the Dalzport Water District walked away from the project. They said, this is too much, you know, too much loans, we don't wanna do it. And so then the statement was, it kinda died, you know, because they walked away, because there was the conditions associated with that project that are part of the conditions that back in twenty-eighteen. When I went into the negotiations, um, I wanted to try to get more than just our one project. And I said, well, if, you know, this was, this was, went through, it was approved. I wanna make sure that it can go through again, because we're, we still need to bring that well online at some point. And um, and he said, sure, you know, that was a verbal between us. We didn't have it in writing, but we both recall it. And then in the, what we passed last week, it seems like in the, the wording um, that we passed tied back to the twenty-eighteen. And in the twenty-eighteen, there wasn't really anything for the, that I know of from talking with staff from back then and Commissioner Soder. And um, there, the, the filter system, the A-Tech filters that they've got to put in wasn't part of what that was.
Oh, okay.
And so that's where, cause you know, whenever we use these dollars, the goal is to try to match big grants, you know. So for every dollar we spend locally, we're getting four or five state or federal grants. And the, then we'd had multiple conversations about the filters in that time. And when the, as I understand it, when the apple or the cherry processor came onboard, they use a lot of water for a short amount of time. And that blows out the amount of water that can go through those filters. So they need additional filters for when, you know, the cherry plant comes online for the capacity. And we've had those conversations for multiple years. The and I talked with uh, ex-commissioner Soder, because the water district guys are saying that commis- uh, the commissioner Soder said, we can get two hundred thousand dollars to do this. And I was like, well, Commissioner Soder doesn't make promises that have to go in front of the board. You know, he can't, just like, you know, we, we can't make decisions for the board. And if that's its own project, it has to be negotiated with the P U D using landfill gas dollars. And so I know, and Commissioner Soder knew that very well. And so what I'm trying to figure out is, is we authorized, you know, the last week, the agreement. But that was part of the twenty-eighteen agreement that had all these conditions about the well and transferring the water, right, and all this other stuff, so. This is in your court with the airport. I'm trying to figure out where we're at now and how we, how we make sure that we get where we need to be.
With that agreement in twenty-eighteen that happened, um, it moved forward, I believe, to twenty-twenty-two, when you had a discussion with Mister Gunkel. And so I had reviewed some of that uh, when they'd asked for the landfill dollars. And what I had seen in it was that you would move it forward, and I was assuming moving the money forward, so when they filled out a new application, they could access that funding to improve the A-Tech system. And so I went ahead and had them fill out a new grant application, thinking that satisfied it. And then it was pointed out to me that in twenty-eighteen, there were, I believe, four
Conditions.
Conditions that they had to. Um, so I did notify them that there were conditions that were carried forward with that. And I sent those down to them. And um, so they understand that until those conditions are met, that the P U D cannot authorize that funding. Um, and I, my understanding, the last time I talked to them, is they're going through those conditions and crafting a letter that they'll send to the P U D of where they feel they are at with fulfilling those conditions of what they might have done or don't have done.
In, I think, when the P U D did it back in twenty-eighteen, those conditions were levied on both the county and them.
Yeah, and they're gonna send us a copy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's stuff that we have to do in order to ma- to meet that. And so that was my first question is, is, so they filled out a new application. And so was that new application for something that wasn't with the twenty-eighteen dollars? And so should that have, should that have just been a new application that came forward that we then took over to Dan and said, the, the twenty-eighteen is still there for bringing the well online, because the, the A-Tech system won't bring the well.
Okay.
What I don't wanna do is give up the two hundred thousand dollars for the well.
I see what you're saying.
Because if we give up the two hundred thousand for the well, because we know that bringing the well online is gonna be a lot of money. And I wanna make sure we have dollars available to match state and federal grants for bringing the well online, because we know we're gonna.
And it was my understanding that um, the new vessels that would be added to the system would be beneficial for supplying that fire flow to the airport.
Yes.
And so I don't know if they're thinking this qualifies as that two, twenty-eighteen ask? Or if they're thinking, I'm, I need to talk to them probably, are you thinking this might be a new ask?
So that's, that's the best way, because when we look at the twenty-eighteen, that wasn't directly being asked for, for the filter system.
Right.
You know, that was, that was part of a much larger package. The best thing that, from my perspective is, is I ne- I don't know if they're bringing any match or anything like that to the, to the filter system, or we were just paying for the whole thing.
Um, they were not bringing match, but they're doing the work, as if that's considered match.
Yeah, so as long as, as long as we're not paying for them to do the work, then it could be considered match. If we're paying for them to do the work, then it's not.
Okay.
Um, but in, so that was, and when I talked, I called com- uh, Soder, and, and that's what he said. He said, you know, um, he said, his words were, I will be supportive of the application. I cannot make a decision on it, but you need to fill out the application. And they never filled out the application from then till now.
Correct.
You got them to fill out the application.
And I wasn't in the work back then.
You weren't in it. And so that's where we got crossed up, because then you would have took the application, called a meeting with you and Dan to go and negotiate and try to get that through on its own.
Okay.
So that we would still would have the two hundred thousand dollars for.
Separated up from two thousand eighteen.
From the, for twenty-eighteen.
Let me go back and talk to them.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think maybe if they adjust their application, we try, try it again, they might.
Well, we.
We'll see what they.
Entered into the agreement, so, cause what I don't want is, is, you know, we're currently in the middle with the attorneys and everything else to try to, about the well. And we don't know how long that'll take. You know, we're in it twelve years. And so what I don't want, we've got these conditions sitting over this approved application that we did. Well, what if it takes three or four more years, but they need the vessels now? And so would it be faster if they, you went and negotiated with Dan on, this is its own application. This is, it's a separate application. It stands on its own. Can we do this? And then we can go, yeah, we can do this. If you and Dan can work. So I'm just trying to find out the ways to get through it.
Yeah, that gives us something else to, to offer.
Which is why it probably shouldn't have been on the consent agenda so last week. It puts us, it puts us in a weird situation, but we'll get through it, so.
Yeah.
And I wanna give you that, that background of how that went.
Yeah. And that, that's after I talked to Dan a couple of times and kind of had gone there.
Got it. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay.
Uh, well, let me double check. Sent from last week. That's all I have.
Good, me too. I think that is it for the day.
Yeah, we don't have any meetings that we'll both be at, right?
No.
We don't, sure.
You guys are running, look at your smile.
All right. Mad, yeah, weird afternoon. Madam Chair, uh, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, noting that the commissioner's office will be closing at one o'clock. Madam Chair, uh, I would make a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, noting that the commissioner's office will be closing at one o'clock. On Wednesday, May first, and will remain closed on Thursday, May second, and Friday, May third, for the clerk conferences. Uh, I would also note there will not be workshop on May second, twenty-twenty-four.
And I'll step down in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you very much. Another meeting.